There's others on.
But we can't see them.
Could everyone that's -- every board member that is actually logged in, could you turn your camera on so we can see you? We can see Mary Beth Gacy and Ron, and we can see the Commissioner, but we can't see anyone else. Just trying to make sure we have a quorum. Still only see the Commissioner, Ron, and Mary Beth. And now we see you, Joe. Thank you.
Elaine.
We need to see you, Elaine, and we need to see me.
Yeah, I have my camera on, but nothing's happening.
All right. Well, we hear your beautiful voice, so I think that's good.
I have my camera on also, but nothing's going through.
I hear your beautiful voice as well, ma'am.
Are we live now? Good. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notification of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the State Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Department of Education, the Secretary of State's office, and notice has been given to the State House press corps, the Governor's office, and the State Board Agenda subscribers. And we have a quorum of Dr. Ron Butcher, Dr. Joseph Rikka, Ms. Mary Beth Gacy Bruder, Mary Beth Berry, and Vice President Andrew Melvahill, and Member Sylvia Sylvia. So as we have a quorum present, this meeting shall now come to order. May I please ask for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mary Beth Berry. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Vice President Melvahill. Seconds it. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. So we will go into next executive session. Whereas in order to protect the personal privacy and to avoid situations wherein the public interests might be diserved, the Open Public Meetings Act permits public bodies to exclude the public from the portion of a meeting at which certain matters are discussed. Now therefore, be it resolved that consistent with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B, the State Board of Education will now adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. So may I please have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you very much, Board Member Sylvia Sylvia. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Board Member Mary Beth Berry. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I heard four ayes. One, two, three, four, and Mary Beth Gacy. That's five.
Aye. That's Elaine.
Aye.
That's Elaine.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's six.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson and Dr. Butcher. Very good. We will be back by 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, but he's down, he's. Okay.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Do we have a quorum? Not yet. Okay. Board members, if you're virtual, please turn on your cameras. Board members, if you're virtual, please turn on your cameras.
Kathy, I'm here and my camera's on, but I'm not showing.
Okay.
President Goldenberg, let's do a roll call.
We will.
You ready?
That's the same with me, President.
We're going to reconvene. Sorry? We're going to reconvene now to resume our public portion of the meeting. Whereas consistent with the provision of NJSA 10:44, I'm sorry, 10:4-12B, the State Board will now adjourn from executive session to resume the open session of this meeting. So may I please have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you very much, Sylvia, Sylvia. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Board Member Mary Beth Berry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good. Thank you. Director Shonar, if you could please do a roll call. Thank you.
Arcilio Aponte. Mary Beth Berry.
Here.
Elaine Bobrov.
Here.
Fatima Burnham Watkins. Ronald Butcher. Jack Farnaro.
Gentlemen, Jack is in the room.
Mary Beth Gazy.
Here.
Ned Johnson.
Present.
Here.
Joseph Rika.
Good morning, I'm here.
Sylvia, Sylvia, present. Andrew Malvehill.
Here.
Kathy Goldenberg.
Here, present, thank you.
You have nine members present, you have a quorum.
Tremendous, thank you. Mary Beth Berry, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to note that our, our Acting Commissioner, Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan, is virtual with us today, so just want that. For those of you who may not know, she is avidly listening and will speak, so.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. I would like to welcome everyone for joining us. Thank you so much. Here we are almost just beginning with May. Doesn't feel like the end of spring, but it is. Soon we'll be complaining of the heat. I want to welcome you today. It's wonderful to see all of you who made the trip here, and for those of you listening online, thank you. Um, may I please ask for an approval of the minutes? The following people should abstain, however. Mary Beth Gazy should abstain, and Fatima Burnham Watkins. So may I please ask for, um. A motion to approve the minute.
Motion.
Thank you very much, Board Member Sylvia, Sylvia. May I please have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much, Mary Beth Berry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you very much, Board Member Gazy, thank you. Um, the State Board will receive public testimony on the draft of New Jersey Student Learning Standards today in mathematics and in English Language Arts. The State Board will also receive open topic public testimony in addition to testimony on the revisions of the rules proposed for the readoption with amendments to Chapter Seven, Managing for Equality and Equity in Education. I would like to take a moment and thank Board Members Jack Farnaro and Mary Beth Berry for attending the hearing that took place in Warren County. And I would like to thank Board Member Bobrov and Board Member Dr. Johnson for attending with me the hearings in Camden County on math and English Language Arts standards. And today will be the third hearing of that in the central area of the state. And of course, our Department of Ed was also there, Jordan Schiff among others, and I want to thank you for being there as well. Um, our State Board Permanent Student Representative, Lauren Knopp, is a senior at Ocean City High School in Cape May County. And she is not present today because she's taking her Advanced Placement exam, so we're all going to wish her well and hope that she does beautifully. So we will have to forego the student report this month. Um, the State Board and Acting Commissioner, Dr. Angela Allen McMillan, and we will both be unfortunately wishing her well next month and saying goodbye to her and welcoming our new student representative. Our resolution this month is about Better Hearing and Speech. And as we recognize this, it is fitting for the State Board of Ed to have advance awareness in communication disorders that draw attention to all those individuals who work tirelessly to help those with communication disorders to communicate effectively and to live a very high-quality life. Um, before we read the resolution into the record, may I please have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by Mary Beth Berry. May I please ask for a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Sylvia, Sylvia. Um, as you were the second, would you do us the honor, please, of reading the resolution in recognition of Better Hearing and Speech Month?
It's my pleasure. And once again, thank you for whoever does the font size. I really appreciate that. Okay, resolution in honor of Better Hearing and Speech Month in New Jersey. Whereas the month of May 2023 is being celebrated nationally as Better Hearing and Speech Month. And whereas the New Jersey State Board of Education recognizes that many students have communication disorders and acknowledges the significance that the ability to communicate plays in building personal and societal relationships as students grow and mature. And whereas Better Hearing and Speech Month is a time to raise awareness about communication disorders and to encourage children and families to receive appropriate screenings and evaluations. And whereas Better Hearing and Speech Month is also a time to acknowledge the hard work of audiologists, speech-language pathologists, and speech-language and hearing scientists and the contributions they make that remarkably affects the lives of students in New Jersey. And whereas these professionals are invested in serving, in serving the needs of students with speech, language, and hearing disorders to foster success in all aspects of their lives by prioritizing effective communication for the highest quality of life. And whereas the New Jersey Speech, Language, Hearing Association supports students and professionals by its professional development offerings, advocacy efforts, and public awareness campaigns designed to ensure that high-quality care is provided. And whereas it is both fitting and proper that special recognition be given to acknowledge May 2023 as Better Hearing and Speech Month along with commending the New Jersey Speech, Language, Hearing Association for its role in providing outstanding service to professionals throughout the state of New Jersey. Now therefore be it resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education and the Acting Commissioner of Education recognize May 2023 as Better Hearing and Speech Month in New Jersey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, is there any discussion you would take the vote on?
I'd just like to say one thing, if it's okay. Um, one of my gaggle of kids, early on, I thought he had a, a, a hearing deficit, but it took seven specialists before we finally found out that he had a really severe hearing loss in one ear and more mild in the other ear. And, and the work that, um, our pathologists and our speech therapists in the public school in my town did helped my son learn how to say words, including his name, by feeling his, he couldn't say, because he can't hear "kuh." He couldn't say "Jack." And when he came up to me and tugged my shirt one day and said, "Mommy, Jack, kuh," I cried. That kid is now 26, graduated Johns Hopkins in 2020, and, and I couldn't be more proud. But all of that couldn't have happened without the professionals that we're talking about today.
Just one story on several that I know every one's.
President Goldenberg, are you speaking? I just cannot hear you.
Thank you. I wanted to articulate that that's happened for so many of our children, and we're very blessed to have such a good, robust system in place. Um, I think we'll go ahead and take a vote unless, Commissioner, your hand is up. Did you want to say something before the vote?
No, I will wait till after the vote. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Anyone opposed, please signify by saying nay. The vote passes unanimously. Thank you. And now I would like to please bring up, uh, if you'd like to come up, please, Robin Kretschman. The immediate. if you'd like to come up, please, Robin Kretschman, the immediate past president of New Jersey S.H.A. And I'd like for you to say a few words, and then the Commissioner obviously has something to add after. I think that microphone's on, if you want to turn it on, there's a little.
It's on. Okay, can you hear me? Awesome, okay. So, good morning. I would like to acknowledge Acting Commissioner Allen McMillan and President Goldenberg for, Goldenberg, excuse me, for inviting us to this meeting. And thank the members of the Department of Education for this opportunity to come before you today in person, yay. I am honored to accept this resolution for May as Better Hearing and Speech Month on behalf of the New Jersey Speech, Language, Hearing Association, affectionately known as NJSHA. NJSHA's current president, Kathy Palitucci, was supposed to be here today accepting this award, this proclamation. Unfortunately, could not be here today due to health issues. So I am here in her place.
We appreciate you coming.
Thank you. As audiologists and speech-language pathologists, or speech-language specialists as we're known in the schools, and for short, we refer to ourselves as SLPs, we know that communication is key to the way all students learn. And it's especially important for students with learning disabilities or communication impairments. SLPs play an important role alongside reading specialists and classroom teachers in helping students gain, or since the pandemic, regain important literacy skills which have declined during the pandemic. As SLPs and audiologists, we work to coordinate and provide the individualized treatment plans each student needs to succeed. Being part of a collaborative team is essential for the success of all our New Jersey students. NJSHA is committed to the provision of high-quality services to New Jersey's diverse student population in as equitable and inclusive a way as possible, regardless of the student's zip code or home language. NJSHA has provided resources to the Office of Special Education and will continue to do so. And we are encouraged by the open communication we have with OSEP. And I'm so glad for your comments, Mrs. Sylvia. And that's just one example of, you know, one of the things that our dedicated professionals in the schools and in other settings do to help children to communicate and express themselves. It's life-changing. The resolution today recognizes the role communication specialists have in helping students develop their skills. We appreciate our partnership with you. And NJSHA thanks you very much for the Department of Education's resolution in recognition of May as Better Hearing and Speech Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Traditionally, do we have the resolution?
Thank you, President Goldenberg. I just have to say, I am thrilled to honor the professionals who prioritize effective communication for the highest quality of life of all students. The number of children and young adults at risk for noise-induced hearing loss is rising, particularly with prolonged exposure to excessively loud music combined with the use of earbuds and headphones. Research has shown that early detection is critical to promote better hearing and speech for every student. The Department of Education is excited to continue its work with NJSHA to increase opportunities for professional development, networking, mentoring, and continuing education, greater advocacy, as well as increasing the visibility and public awareness of speech, language, and hearing impediments. Congratulations on this distinction. And I am another success story, as I had speech and language services when I was younger to address my stuttering that was very pervasive for a period of time. So I want to thank all the professionals who helped to change lives and make dreams come true. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we have a second resolution in regards to Physical Fitness and Sports Month. And before we read that resolution into the record, may I please ask for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Board Member Berry, may I please ask for a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Mulva Hill. And so now we'll read the resolution before we vote. Mr. Fanaro, would you be so kind?
Good morning, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Welcome, okay. Resolution in recognition of Physical Education, Fitness, and Sports Month in New Jersey. Whereas children's obesity has reached epidemic proportion in the United States. Whereas today's childhood obesity rates are putting our children on course to be the first generation in this country to live shorter and less healthier, healthy lives than their parents and. Whereas children spend many of their weary hours in their devices or at school and therefore need to be active during the school day to meet the recommendations of the physical activity guidelines for Americans. And whereas the United States Department of Health and Human Services recommends that young people aged six through 17 years participate in at least 60 minutes of physical activity daily. And whereas NJSA 18A colon 35 dash 7 and 8 require all students in grades 1 through 12 to participate in at least two and one-half hours per week in health, safety, and physical education. And whereas research shows that physically active children are more likely to thrive academically and have improved behavior in school. And whereas research shows that regular physical activity in childhood, excuse me, because I don't have my glasses. Hold on, I'll repeat that. Whereas research shows that regular physical activity in children and adolescents improves strength and endurance, helps their healthy bones and muscle, helps control weight, reduce depression, anxiety, and stress, increase self-esteem, increase academic performance, improve behavior, leads to better school attendance, and may improve blood pressure and cholesterol levels. And whereas schools can promote physical activity through comprehensive school physical activity program, including recess, classroom-based physical activity, trendimal physical activity, clubs, interclassical sports, and physical education. And whereas participation in sports teams and physical activity clubs can improve grade point average, school achievement, educational aspirations, and likelihood of graduation. And whereas higher physical fitness levels are associated with better school attendance rates and fewer disciplinary incidents involving drugs, alcohol, violent or truancy. And whereas the New Jersey State Board of Education strongly supports efforts to increase physical education, physical activity, and participation in youth sports, recognizes the month of May as National Physical Education and Sports Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the New Jersey State Board of Education and Acting Commissioner of Education acknowledges the week of May 1 through the 7 of 2023 as National Physical and Sports Week and recognizes National Physical Fitness and Sports Month and the central role of physical education and sports in creating a healthy lifestyle for all children in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
I should have brought my glasses, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. And is, are there any discussion points?
If I could, I'd just like to say, Jack.
Here.
Now, here we go. I'd just like to say that upstairs, I noticed how much weight Jack had lost. And I said he looked great, and then he told me I needed to lose some weight. I have to say that that resolution just inspired me to head in that direction, so thank you, Jack.
If I may add something. In my experience over the years, okay, I, in order to get frustration out of my system, I was, I became a marathon runner, to be honest with you. And I used to run 20, at least, at least maybe four, five, six miles a day. And it would help me cope with any of the stresses that I may have had. And I had many of them at the time. And it's a good way of keeping yourself in control. And I was so happy to be at a weight level at that time of 175 pounds with a 32 waistline and a 37 chest. So I was in great shape. And physical participation is very, very important. It helps you, and it makes you feel much better. And it's a nice high to have if you decide that you want to get something out of life and be happy with.
Thank you.
That's my experience. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Well said. I know it's excellent for your mental and your stress levels, and certainly for your health. We appreciate your comments. Any other comments before we take a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries wholeheartedly. I would like to ask for Mr. Bruce Paragala to please come forward and accept the resolution on behalf of SHAPE New Jersey. And if you'll meet me at the podium to say a few words. And then after that, I'm sure our Commissioner has things to add to our conversation. Jack, do you want to? Be careful looking forwards, let's go this way.
Yeah.
You did great, Jack. Much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did, you did great.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Do you have some more?
I do.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you very much. On behalf of SHAPE New Jersey, we really appreciate the resolution. And as testified here, I think we play an important role, not only for all adults, but certainly our children that are in our schools. I would like to take a moment and congratulate all of our teachers on this Teacher Appreciation Day. And especially, I'd like to thank our health and physical education teachers that are in our schools each and every day. I would also like to, as a retired educator, like to thank the State Board of Education for all that you have done for us in education, and also for our Department of Education that keeps our schools going. Thank you very much for all that you do, and really, it's an honor to be here.
Thank you. We're very glad to have you. Thank you. And if I could ask if there are any more comments at this time, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Allen McMillan, please.
Thank you, President Goldenberg. So I am delighted to participate in the recognition of Physical Fitness and Sports Month in New Jersey. Being active and maintaining a schedule that includes daily physical fitness is one way to promote a healthy lifestyle. Whatever physical activity you enjoy, consistency positively influences your daily habits. Stay active and consider returning to a past sport that you enjoyed or exploring a new one. Thank you to SHAPE NJ for joining us today.
Thank you. And Jack, I'm just glad you didn't tell the world I had to lose weight, but I do. All right, moving forward then, at this time, we have a board, a State Board of Education Nominating Committee I'd like to announce for the school year of 2023-2024. And I would like to say that at this time, I would like to ask that Mary Beth Gazy will serve as chairperson for a nominating committee. And the State Board members who will fulfill the role of working with her are Board Members Sylvia Sylvia and Mary Beth Berry to serve on the committee. The School Board Nominating Committee will present the slate of officers for 2023-2024 school year at the June 7, 2023, meeting. In accordance with our bylaws, these elections for the State Board leadership will be held after June 30 and will be announced in our July meeting. Any questions at this time? I want to thank them. I called several board members, and they were, they were very kind to serve in this capacity. I promise it won't be too hard work. So, thank you. State Board Annual Calendar Announcement. In our agenda, you have a proposed list of State Board meeting dates for the 2023-2024 year. Please share your thoughts. The State Board will, the State Board will vote on the resolution to adopt the 2023-2024 calendar of State Board meeting dates at the June 7, 2023, monthly public meeting. There are four alternative dates that everyone should be aware of in case of poor weather. These are in December, January, February, and March. And in case that happens, we will move from our first Wednesday of the month to the third Wednesday of the month in event of weather cancellations. You can read for yourself the public meeting dates. And I don't need to read all of them, I don't believe, because they're all listed. But please take a look at that and respond to Director Shoner or myself if there are issues with the dates for you. Thank you. Next, we have our committee reports. And I would like to ask Board Member Mary Beth Berry, the chairperson of the CTE Committee, to report on a meeting that was held on April 26.
Thank you, President Goldenberg. The CTE Coding Committee met with the department on April 26, 2023. In attendance were State Board members, President Goldenberg, Sylvia Sylvia, Jack Fanaro, Elaine Bobrow, and myself. Accompanying us at the meeting were department staff, Jordan Schiff, Lisa Habrel, James Thompson, Tori Bun, Julie Bunt, Chris Huber, Diane Shoner, Beth Arswald, and Stephanie Russo. So the department shared some exciting work they will be doing to help districts fully implement Perkins 5, which requires all programs meet two out of three criteria of high-skilled, high-wage, and in-demand careers. Perkins 5 shifted things to a more work- high-skill, high-wage, and in-demand careers. Therefore, the department discussed one possible transition of the CNA program into a pre-nursing program, which could provide students with additional careers and wage growth opportunities. I'd like to thank the department for its extensive planning regarding this transition, and I look forward to hearing about this program and others as progress unfolds. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. That was quite an end. I might be, I'm trying to save batteries and be sustained. Okay, here we are. Thank you. So, yes, that meeting was very important, and we heard some wonderful things happening in the school communities. I'm grateful to hear all the wonderful programs that are ongoing. You are just in time. Our Celia Aponte has just joined us to give a report on the assessment committee that met on April 27th, which was on Friday of this past week. Thank you. Here?
Thank you, Madam President. Apologies for being a bit late here. I'll just read the overview of the assessment committee report. The assessment committee met, as the President just mentioned, on April 27th to discuss the department's proposal to change the Cut Scores on New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or NJGPA. I thank the department for keeping open the lines of communication regarding the NJGPA and the next generation of state assessments.
Sorry?
They can't hear me? I'm on, definitely on. Move it closer. Okay. Okay. This topic is of concern to all State Board members, and it is my belief that everyone wants to do what is best for the students across the state. I look forward to the robust discussions when we reach this NJGPA resolution later in the meeting. As our committee discussion correlates to the items on today's agenda, I just want to add that we certainly had a robust discussion on the 27th. This is something of great concern, and many board members have spent a lot of time on this particular topic. It is not something that we take lightly, but again, we've spent hours in discussion, and I hope that in, later on in the agenda, when we cover this topic, that we continue to have that discussion, because it's such an important issue to address. And I just want to thank the board members who participated over the last several weeks and months in this discussion, particularly those on this, on the assessment committee. Thank you.
Thank you. You were here just, I may need a new battery, guys. All right. Thank you. You were here just in the nick of time, and we appreciate that so much. Thank you. Our next topic in my report is that we had petitions for rulemaking sent to us, and these are two, we received three petitions all in all, two on January 30th, 2023, from Jill Caccia, and one on February 15th, from Jamie Epstein. In the interest of time, I will advise that each of these petitions, because they're quite lengthy, I will advise that each of these petitions have been denied, and each request and reasons for the denial are available to view on the New Jersey Department of Education's Administrative Code website. Please know that the petitions have been filed with the Office of Administrative Law for publications in the New Jersey Register. I don't have to read them all? All right. They're quite lengthy, so please, you know, look it up if you'd like to know more details about it. And now, we turn this over to Acting Commissioner Dr. Angelica Allen McMillan, if she would like to go ahead with your reports. Thank you.
Thank you, President Goldenberg. I want to say good morning again to you, to Vice President Mulvaughill, members of the State Board, and all of those in attendance. I hear an echo, but I'm going to proceed. Today, in response to your request, Mr. Robert DiBiase, Chair of the Italian-American Heritage Commission, will present the work of the Italian-American Heritage Commission. The mission of the New Jersey Italian-American Heritage Commission is to build and strengthen the cultural identity of Italians and Italian-Americans through public educational programs that preserve and promote an accurate, bias-free, and non-stereotype understanding and awareness of historical and current contributions, as well as accomplishments of people of Italian heritage. Mr. DiBiase will also be available to answer questions following his presentation. Mr. DiBiase?
Do you need help?
We got it. I think, I, can you, this is good. You can, I'm on. Thank you, Acting Commissioner Allen McMillan.
Can you hear? Yes? Okay. Just making sure. Thank you.
And also, President Goldenberg and other officers and staff, Acting Commissioners, thank you so much for this time to allow us to come here and present a smidgen of some of the things that we're doing. There is a presentation, and I'm not going to kill you with slides, there are only four, that I'm going to talk to. And I have to thank the Commissioner for her introduction. She captured the essence of what the Italian Heritage Commission really is, and I applaud her for that. In fact, I think she addressed it better than I could at the table, but thank you. All right. On the, on the first slide, and I'm clicking. Where's my IT? Anyway, while we're waiting for this slide, I can just talk, talk to the primary mission of the New Jersey Italian Heritage, Heritage Commission, and you heard the Acting Commissioner go into some detail on it. But the essence of this is we coordinate with the New Jersey school superintendents and public organizations. We partner with the superintendents, we partner with teachers, Italian-American organizations, and even the Italian government. We compose, distribute, and promote implementation of lessons on history and culture that is age-appropriate in grades K to 12. The New Jersey Italian Heritage Commission has a curriculum committee consisting of, we have a Board of Academic Advisors, and they are from all the, not all, but most of the universities in the state of New Jersey, as well as schools, and they act as our advisors. Our curriculum committee decides what topics that we're going to create lessons on, and we send it to a, a private company, Hibernian Global Education LLC. Now, Dr. Brady, who's the president of that company, has been with the state of New Jersey on and off for the past 25 years. He has helped create several commissions in the state, and doing their websites and helping them. We, we hire them to, to research fact-based materials, cross the Ts and dot the Is, and it comes back to the, to the cultural committee with our advisors, and then we really go through it and before it gets to the teachers. So, from there, we provide programs throughout the state for awareness and guidance. If you go to our website, newjerseyitalianheritage.org, you will see an example of that. New Jersey TV had the opportunity to, do a classroom close-up in, in a local school in Great, Great, in Great Egg Harbor, Great Egg Harbor. And, and the professionalism that was, was used that day between the teachers and the advisors saw how the teacher took the lessons, infused it into their curriculum, into their syllabus, and customized the guidelines, and you got, you had the opportunity to see in-classroom, lesson being taught, the, the research being done in the classroom by the students, pros and cons, they had a discussion on the topic, and then, and the after-effects, and this was the best part of it, you heard the feedback from students and what they got out of that lesson. So that captures it, and just, it's a five-minute video, and you should visit that to...
Where in Egg Harbor did this take place?
This is, I'm thinking of the school, it was...
Public school?
It's a public school, yes. All our lessons, even though we help parochial and private institutions, our fort is in a public school system, and we get calls from other institutions about our curriculum and our lessons. But our, our main charge is to partner with the superintendents and the curriculum directors in the different counties. Now, in 2020, we got the idea of taking our paper, our documents and lessons, and creating video and PowerPoint presentations. And in doing so, we, we thought that it would capture that attentiveness of the students, first of all, and also directing it toward the teacher's time. It's the biggest commodity that they have, the biggest resource they have in their day's time. They have so many things on their plate. So what can our curriculum committee do to help that? Well, we have, in our series, we have videos for the overall topic. We have a PowerPoint presentation that is narrated by teachers and their success being taught in classrooms, and then we have a duplicate PowerPoint presentation without the narration, so the teacher can pick and choose what topic and, and what slides to augment their topics of the day. And from there, we go on, and the first one was, we combined four or five lessons, and the first one was "An Italian Dream," and it's the Venetian Spice Monopoly that started a, a chain reaction in the world at that time. And we have the man who changed the world, Christopher Columbus, origins of the Hispanic peoples, and then immigration. If you go to that, if you go to our website, you can see the documentation and how it evolved into the PowerPoint and videos. But the PowerPoint and videos are, I think, a, a great tool for teachers to use so that they can actually critique the video and the PowerPoint and timing. On each one of our slides, on each one of our videos, there's a time element, so they know exactly how long it would take to show the entire framework, as opposed to picking and choosing the pertinent or the salient points at that time. So, our focus is, is to assist the teachers. Now, our next one that we just did, and I'm proud to say that we did it in, in collaboration with the Holocaust Commission, and I understand Commissioner Cersei was here recently talking about some of the high points about his commission. But this is dark time and a period in Europe, and we are fact-based, and so we do not come to conclusion. We put it out there so that the teacher can create an environment with fact-based research to create critical thinking, and that's the important drive here, create critical thinking. Okay, so, we have those five videos that you can see on our website. Now, going forward, our next set of lessons that we're going to be working on, as, we're updating our website, by the way, so it's going to have a, a more crisp and timely appearance, but the upcoming lessons on Roman influence and the creation of the American Republic. And I think this is going to be quite an assistance to the teachers, because it goes through the creation and our founding fathers and what they were thinking at that time. And it's going to consist of the intro video, of course, it's two minutes, but you're going to have five five-minute videos, seven PowerPoint presentations. Now, two of those are from existing lessons that involve Jefferson and natural law. But going forward, I think this approach to streamline the research that the teacher has to do and their workday, preparing for these lessons for the students, I think this is beneficial for them. Now, in October, we schedule a professional development day, and we invite teachers from around the state to come. We have teachers that will give presentations that actually use the lessons and give us our, an example of their experience. So that will take place in October, and I think we're going to have it in central part of the state, in New Brunswick, possibly Rutgers Student Center. And I mentioned before about partnering with the superintendents and our director of curriculum activities in the school. I want to conduct a survey, I want to send out a survey through the Board of Education and see how we can be more effective in the lessons that we're doing. So that, that survey will be coming out. Hopefully, we'll get the blessing to do that. Now, if, if I may, I really, really thank you for this time to come here, but I have to say that as the New Jersey Italian Heritage Commission Chair, our curriculum committee, chaired by someone we, we all know in this room, Dr. Jilda Rulo Baldisanti, that is the fort of this commission. I might be the chair, but our Curriculum and Education Committee is the fort. So if I've inspired or, or created some inkling of interest here to go to our website, you will really be impressed when you see their work when you go to our website, and I thank you, President Goldenberg.
Thank you. We have questions?
Please.
I'm sure. I can start, but did you want to go first?
Go ahead, and I'll, I'll go after.
I'm curious, because I can see a melding for not just Italians studying students, but for social science and for history, for all this to be interrelated. Are you, are you getting requests from schools around the state to bring this into other parts of the curriculum, not just Italian classwork rooms?
President Goldenberg, that's an excellent question, and I can say at the inception, when this was first started by the Curriculum Committee, that is one of the focuses, so they have it broken down where the teacher can go in and see if it's history, social studies, language, current events, and they can pick and choose out of the lessons which one that would be apropos to infuse to help them with the topics of the day. So, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's tremendous. Did you have a question?
More, more of a comment. Robert, thank you, first of all, for your presentation, and I, I can't say enough about how cross-curricula the Italian heritage in education can be with arts, history, certainly food. There, there's just so much architecture, there, there is just so much to know and learn. I'm actually, my, my extremely proud, extremely Italian husband and I are going to Italy in a couple of weeks, so I've been trying to arrange...
I'm going to carry your luggage.
Yes. Please, come with us. We are, so I've been trying to arrange all, I want to do everything, but you'd have to, I'd have to stay there for a year to even scratch the surface. If you have any tips, that would be great. So far, I've arranged an audi, I'll be there for the Papal audience and, and the Bruce Springsteen audience, and, and the Colosseum and St. Peter's Basilica. There's just so much, in addition to the Stanley Tucci tour. So I, I, very seriously, if you have any suggestions, send them to me, but the educational value, you know, all joking aside, of what the Italian heritage history brings to our students throughout our, and as you said, there, there's so much they have to pack into each day. When we have opportunities to cross-curricula, those are really the most valuable things to me, so thank you, Robert.
If I may, President.
Please.
Really, thank you for those comments. You don't have to...
in a couple of weeks. So I've been trying to arrange...
Carry your luggage.
Yes. Please, come with us. We are, so I've been trying to arrange all, I want to do everything, but you'd have to, I'd have to stay there for a year to even scratch the surface. If you have any tips, that would be great. So far, I've arranged an audi, I'll be there for the papal audience and the Bruce Springsteen audience, and the Colosseum and St. Peter's Basilica. There's just so much, in addition to the Stanley Tucci tour. So I, very seriously, if you have any suggestions, send them to me. But the educational value, you know, all joking aside, of what the Italian heritage history brings to our students throughout our, and as you said, there's so much they have to pack into each day. When we have opportunities to cross-curricula, those are really the most valuable things to me. So thank you, Robert.
If I may, President.
Please.
Really, thank you for those comments. You don't have to put too much emphasis on the resolution that was just read because you're going to be walking every place in Italy, so don't worry about the pasta. But from the land that gave us the Renaissance, you are absolutely right. And our lessons capture a lot of that in history. When we're doing an assembly and we're talking to people and we talk about the Declaration of Independence and everyone, Thomas Jefferson, Thomas Jefferson, and we talk about the great Italians, oh, Thomas Jefferson wasn't Italian, yes, but he befriended a fellow by the name of Philip Marseille, who gave him that phrase, "All men are created equal." And they look starry-eyed, what? And research, and research. So in the history aspect of it, in our lessons, it's filtered in all of our lessons. Thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
There's a good comment as well. I certainly echo the words of my colleague Sylvia Sivia, although I'm not going to Italy with her, unfortunately.
We're going to carry her luggage.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for bringing the history of Italian Americans in this way to our New Jersey students. It's so important for us to be able to celebrate the contributions of all of our racial and ethnic groups in this country. And again, the great strength of our country is in its diversity. And so I want to thank you for sharing your agency's work and your work towards providing these educational opportunities for our students. And, you know, I'm certainly looking forward to going to your website, particularly on looking at the topics of Venetian spice monopoly, as well as the origins of Hispanic people. And lastly, certainly want to get to learn more about your immigration experiences, particularly as it relates to the U.S. and the issue is so topical at this time, as you know, nationally. So looking forward to learning more from your website. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Monti.
Thank you. How many are on your commission?
Well, there are 19 slots on our commission. And of course, the top three are the governor and acting commissioner. And the hands-on, I think we're running the 16 to 17 slots.
Thank you.
And of course, they're appointed by the Assembly and the Senate and the governor. So...
Right, thank you. Any other? Thank you so much for your, for sharing all of this. We enjoyed it immensely.
If I may, President Goldenberg, I would like to leave these, there's thumb drives. And these have our paper lessons on air with our index. Please take one and get a little nibbling on some of the information that's on the website.
I definitely will get one. Thank you. Tremendous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We learned a lot. Okay, and now we'll go ahead with the second Commissioner's report. Would you like to introduce it, or shall I?
President Goldenberg, I will gladly introduce the recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week and state that it is truly my privilege to recognize the phenomenal teachers of New Jersey all the time. But Teacher Appreciation Week provides a perfect forum. Teachers are multifaceted professionals who often go above and beyond to advance student success in numerous arenas. And it is my honor to celebrate them today. Our teachers continue to build upon the lessons learned during the pandemic to cultivate the curiosity, problem-solving, and innovative genius in every student, while impeccably weaving social and emotional learning in their delivery of curricula to accelerate student learning. Moreover, teachers actively create lessons to engage students in formative practices to improve their access to and mastery of grade-level standards. I finally remember those teachers who influenced where I am today. And no, there are immeasurable experiences with outstanding teachers who uniquely influence the positive trajectory of countless students' lives. I ask everyone to please share a positive message with the teacher this week that highlights your value of their work and commitment to the development of our young people. Teachers, you deserve recognition, not only this week, but throughout the year. On behalf of the New Jersey Department of Education, I extend our eternal gratitude to you for helping our students realize their full potential daily and over the course of their lifetime. The New Jersey Department of Education and State Board of Education are grateful for all that you do. I am pleased to highlight a few of our many exceptional educators. Please start the video.
I love teaching, and I truly believe it was my calling. I love helping students find their what, right? What is the thing that they are passionate about? That makes me happy at the end of the day.
So I see we have a glitch with our video that worked perfectly earlier. We're going to see if we can get the audio back.
What makes me passionate about teaching is watching the growth that a child makes in a school year and then seeing them as they grow older. My goal is to help students grow into happy and good humans, and knowing that I may have made a difference in that process is priceless.
I am passionate about teaching because I love seeing my students and making their growth. I love seeing...
Well, for all that they inspire our students across the state in every way. Without our teachers, our students would not be nearly as motivated and excited to go to school and to learn, which is why we are all in this room. So I cannot thank teachers enough for their influence over our students to be passionate about their studies. So I would like to add that at this time. Are there any other comments?
I just, I'm disappointed we can't see that video, and certainly would like to thank those folks that were speaking in the video. I think that's a shame, and we'll all go online. But I think it's really important that we do take the time to thank our teachers. They work so very hard. They don't do it for the money. They do it because they know that they can make a difference. So I think, you know, we live in a world where it's so easy to find something someone did wrong. And maybe it's a great reminder that this would be a great opportunity for all of us just send a note to some teacher at some school and thank them for the job that they're doing because they're extraordinary and we need them.
Thank you very much. Agreed.
Wondering, Madam President, should we give the technical team another try since, you know, again, this is something that is so critical to the delivery of educational services is to celebrate our teachers. I just would hate to miss this opportunity to, to view the video and highlight their work.
Is that something that, we'll give it a whirl?
I love teaching, and I truly believe it was my calling. I love helping students find their what, right? What is the thing that they are passionate about? That makes me happy at the end of the day.
Okay, so I am asking if I may proceed while they work on the video, and we make one additional attempt at the end of my Commissioner's report, please, because I agree with all the sentiments that we definitely do want to hear from our exceptional teachers. And again, during our dry run yesterday and today, the audio was working properly, but Murphy's Law seems to have crept in today. So if I may, President Goldenberg, proceed.
Next, Commissioner, we could always put it on next month again when it's all ironed out, if we can't get it now. So go ahead.
Thank you so much. And our team will work diligently to fix whatever challenges they are experiencing. So this is the segment of my report where I share highlights under the auspices of "In Case You Missed It" and "On The Horizon." So let's begin with "In Case You Missed It." As part of today's Commissioner's report, I am pleased to share my "I See Why Am I," "In Case You Missed It," update on recent initiatives and outreach that demonstrate our continued efforts to support New Jersey's students and educators. On April 13th, I had the opportunity to join Governor Murphy and other Murphy Administration Cabinet members at the 58th Annual New Jersey Conference of Mayors, Spring Conference in Atlantic City. The goal of the New Jersey Conference of Mayors is to provide a unified approach and open line of communication to our state and federal legislatures and administrations that reflect the will of the people of the great state of New Jersey and to improve the health and well-being of all its residents. After Governor Murphy's keynote speech, I met with mayors from across the state in an interactive roundtable discussion format regarding their unique township needs. In hashtag Good News in Schools, I supported Governor Murphy and the New Jersey Commission on Holocaust Education regarding new legislation that will craft and distribute a survey for public schools relating to educational instruction on the Holocaust and genocide. The survey will measure how each school district is meeting the state's current requirement that every board of education include instruction on the Holocaust and genocide in an appropriate place in the curriculum of all elementary and secondary school students. The signing of this legislation, which occurred on Holocaust Remembrance Day, underscores the governor's commitment to combating anti-Semitism while ensuring the promise of, quote, "never again," end quote, is instilled in future generations. I hope you have enjoyed following April's Department of Education's social media pages for informative posts regarding Autism Awareness Month, Military Child Appreciation Month, Week of the Young Child, School Library Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Earth Day, amongst many other important initiatives notwithstanding our desire to attract great talent to our agency. On the horizon this May, stay tuned for social media content recognizing Teacher Appreciation Week, including special YouTube video messages from our state Teacher of the Year and County Teachers of the Year, Special Education Week, Better Speech and Hearing Month, and Physical Fitness and Sports Month. Finally, I would like to highlight that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. The mental health of our students and educators remains at the forefront of much of our work through various training and grant opportunities. However, the smallest acts can also have some of the greatest impact. Sarah Adelman, Commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Human Services, recently shared the importance of self-care in a person's daily routine and the role that it plays in helping you manage stress, lower your risk of illness, and increase your energy. Taking a walk or trying a relaxing activity can have enormous benefits. I would also like to pass on that the Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services is hosting a series of webinars throughout May on topics ranging from suicide prevention to self-care to wellness to navigating difficult topics with children. Please continue to view our social media posts for additional information on these and other timely topics. Thank you, President Goldenberg, and I ask Ms. Shoner if we should proceed with trying to show this video again or wait until next month.
No, I've been told that we can't get it done so at this time. So we will move forward in next month if it's available and ready. I would love to have it come in during May, I'm sorry, during our June meeting.
President Goldenberg, can we just ask, Commissioner, can you also give us an update on the New Jersey Partnership for Student Success? I'm wondering if we have any additional information or launch dates.
Yes, so thank you. The New Jersey Partnership for Student Success is currently focusing on the matching process between school districts and actually teasing out the full number of volunteers at our partner institutions. And so we anticipate being able to update the board this month in greater detail and then to have a robust report at our June meeting. We are also in the midst of advancing several of our key initiatives, including the High Intensity Tutoring Initiative, as well as Rapid and Rapid Plus with review of the vendor applications that were submitted and to release that information. So as we are close to finalizing that, I look forward to updating the board and writing this month and a full, robust report on NJPSS at our June meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mary Beth, regarding that, or anybody for the Commissioner? Okay, hearing none. We'll go into the items for consideration.
Thank you, President Goldenberg, and we will also send each of you the video link that we weren't able to fully display and post it on our website, in addition to sharing it at our June meeting. I'd like to begin with Item A, appointments. Today I present for your consideration one candidate for appointment, Mrs. Jennifer Simons, for the position of Director of the Office of Controversies and Dispute in the Division of Legal and External Services. And President Goldenberg, I return the meeting to you for discussion.
Thank you. I must say, I've read her resume, I've not yet met her. Is she in the room now? If you are, please stand. Hello? I said, you seem overqualified. So I would like to ask first for a first emotion, please. Thank you, Board Member Sylvia Sivia. And may I please have a second? Second. Thank you very much, Board Member Barry. Is there any discussion at this time?
Just what you said, this, yeah, unbelievable, unbelievable resume.
Very impressive.
Yeah, we're lucky.
Very impressive.
So, all right, hearing no other conversation at this time. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions with a conflict of interest? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Would you like to say a few words, please? Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, President Goldenberg, Vice President Mulva Hill, members of the State Board of Education, and Acting Commissioner Alan McMillan. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I look forward to continuing to serve New Jersey's students, teachers, and schools and building on my past work with the department in this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to Item B, Commissioner and Item C.
Yes, and let me just say thank you, President Goldenberg and all members of the board for your continued trust as I work to advance candidates who are adding great value to the Department of Education. Item B, certification of school districts. There are no school districts to recommend for certification today. I will proceed to Item C, President Goldenberg.
Please.
Religious holidays calendar resolution. Today I present for adoption a resolution that identifies the religious holidays permitting student absence from school for the 2023-2024 school year. Following the discussion-level presentation in March, the department received comment from the public that is... from the public that is not generating a change to the resolution. Again, included is a disclaimer that some dates may vary due to differences in the lunar, Gregorian, and Julian calendars. Upon adoption, the list of religious holidays will be distributed to local educational agencies and will be posted on the department's website. From the Division of Field Support and Services are Dr. Christopher Irving, Assistant Commissioner, and Robert Gregory, Executive Director, who are here to answer any questions. Gentlemen.
And distinguished members of the State Board, good morning. Mr. Gregory and I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have for this resolution. And if there are none, we anticipate and would appreciate the Board's adoption and support of the religious holidays, which is annually done by our division each year. Thank you.
It was quite extensive.
Thank you.
I have no comments. Anyone? All right. So may I please have a motion?
Go on.
Thank you very much, Board Member Aponte. May I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion at this time? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, State Board Members for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. That was tough. Acting Commissioner, did you want to?
Yes, thank you so much, President Goldenberg. I now move forward with Item D. Today I present a recommendation to modify the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, also known as the NJGPA Cut Score, based on the data from the administered field test in spring of 2022. The data analysis was required in accordance with PL 2022-C period 60, signed on July 5th, 2022, and the resolution adopted by the State Board of Education on February 2nd, 2022, directing the department to make a recommendation to maintain or modify the adopted cut scores. From the Division of Teaching and Learning Services are Dr. Jordan Schiff, Acting Assistant Commissioner, and Mr. John Bozani, Director of the Office of Assessments, as well as Chris Huber, Chief of Policy, to present the recommendation for the State Board's consideration and to respond to your questions. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, President Goldenberg, Vice President Mulva Hill, and members of the State Board. Today I'm joined by Director of Assessments John Bozani and Special Assistant to the Commissioner Chris Huber, and we would like to present the adoption of the recommendation for the cut scores for the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment and the alternate assessments from the Secondary Pathway to fulfill the graduation assessment requirements for students in the classes of 2024 and 2025. We will open with a recap of the history of graduation pathway usage, then present the results from the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, next review the current and proposed cut scores for the various alternate assessments, and then move on to detailing the anticipated impacts for the portfolio appeal processes. And finally, present the recommendations from the department regarding the cut scores on the NJGPA, as well as the alternative assessments. This slide presents the English Language Arts Graduation Pathway Usage from 2018 through 2022. The data from 2020 and 2021 are omitted because the graduation assessment requirement was waived due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In 2018 and 19, approximately 60% of students fulfilled their graduation assessment requirements utilizing these state assessments. In 2022, it can be seen that there is a reduction in the number of students utilizing the state assessment to fulfill the requirement. This has been attributed to the assessments not being administered for two years. The students did not have the opportunity to take the full selection of offered state assessments. This would also account for the increase in the portfolio appeals process, as we see it has nearly doubled. Here we find the historic Mathematics Graduation Pathway Usage. The state assessments for mathematics prior to the NJGPA included Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, and of course, assessments. Similar to what we see in ELA, approximately 55% of students demonstrated graduation readiness using the state assessment for the years 2018 and 2019. Also, in 2022, there was a decrease in the students demonstrating graduation readiness using the state assessments and an increase in the portfolio appeal usage, again attributed to the pause in testing during the 2020 and 2021 school years. This slide shows the results of the NJGPA from the spring 2022 field test administration, utilizing both a 750 as well as a 725 cut score. The blue bars indicate the percentage of students achieving graduation-ready performance, while the yellow bars represent the students who scored in the "not yet graduation-ready" category. For mathematics at 725, 56.5% of students would have achieved graduation-ready status, and this decreased to 49.5% at the 750 cut score. For English Language Arts at the 725 cut score, 80.7% of students would have demonstrated graduation-ready performance, and that number decreased to 39.4% when utilizing the 750 cut score. For students who do not demonstrate graduation readiness on the state assessment, they may choose from a menu of alternate assessments, what we term as the Secondary Pathway, to demonstrate graduation readiness. As a result of the Board's decision in February of 2022 to set an NJGPA cut score to 750, an alignment study was completed to find the comparable cut scores on each of the alternative assessments. We would now like to share the results of the alignment study to satisfy the graduation assessment requirement using the Secondary Pathway. This slide shows the alternate assessments to satisfy the mathematics graduation assessment requirement. The second column shows the cut scores adopted in 2016 and remained in use through the class of 2022. Column three shows the results of the alignment study, should the NJGPA's cut score be set at 725, and the fourth column shows the results of the alignment study, should the NJGPA cut score be set at 750. This slide shows that the alignment to the NJGPA 725 is very similar to the cut scores adopted and in use since 2016. The results from the alignment study at the 750 cut score represent a significant increase in rigor to demonstrate graduation readiness, which was very different than the rigor since 2016. Here we find, here we find the percent of students from the class of 2022 who would have graduated using the Secondary Pathway, or in other words, use an alternate assessment to demonstrate graduation readiness. Column three represents the percentage of students who achieved the cut score that were in use from 2016 through 2022. The final column represents the percentage of students who would have achieved the cut score if it was aligned to 750 on the NJGPA. The data shows a significant reduction in the percentage of students who would have demonstrated graduation readiness when using an alternative assessment that is aligned to the NJGPA cut score of 750 for mathematics. This slide presents the alternate assessments to satisfy the English Language Arts Graduation Assessment requirement. The second column shows the cut scores in use since 2016. The third column displays the results of the alignment study, should the GPA cut score be set at 725, and the final column shows the results of the alignment study, should the NJGPA cut score be set at 750. Similar to mathematics, the 725-aligned cut score is very similar to what had been in use since 2016, while the 750-aligned cut score represents a significant increase when compared with the cut score used for the students to demonstrate graduation readiness since 2016. We could just take a minute to look at the SAT Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, or the EWRB SAT. The cut score increased from 450 to 570. As a reference point for this value, college boards indicates that the college readiness benchmark for the SAT Evidence-Based Reading and Writing is 480. This benchmark represents students achieving, students achieving this value will have a 75% chance of earning a C or better in a first semester credit-bearing college course in history, literature, social studies, or writing classes. When the NJGPA's cut score is set to 750, the aligned cut score to the evidence-based reading and writing is 90 points above the college readiness as a standard as established by college boards. As a result, the percent of students who demonstrate graduation readiness using the alternative assessment in ELA drops significantly, as we found in math. Next slide, please. As we take a look at the percentage of students meeting the cut scores, again using the data from the class of 2022, it can be seen that there are significant drops in the percentage of students meeting the threshold score when we move to an NJGPA of 750. It is clear that when examining the data from the alternate assessments, setting the NJGPA cut score to 750 significantly changed the graduation standard since 2016. The percent of students meeting or exceeding the aligned 750 NJGPA cut score is approximately half of those students from the class of 2022. If a student does not meet the cut score on the NJ-
Before we proceed with the portfolio appeals process, you mind if I jump in and ask a question about a previous slide?
Yep.
If you go back to Slide 5, when you, when you consider the, the mathematic cut scores, the differential between 725 and 750, you, you see certainly a slight decrease, six and a half percent or so, of students passing the cut, the, the exam at 750. But then you see a significant difference in English Language Arts. What do, what do you account for that, so that we're clearly aware of what the, you see as the issues there?
Yeah, there was, there was a great deal of students who were between the 725 and the 750 cut scores in English Language Arts, many more than what we saw in English and mathematics, I'm sorry, in mathematics. And we know that, that English had been affected through the, through the pandemic. We don't know exactly what the degree of that impact is. We also know that those cut scores are, are set as a result of a standard-setting process, which is a human process of determining what would account for a score at 750 versus 725, and that process yielded these particular results. And I can refer to my, my colleagues who have much greater expertise in this process than I do.
Any additional comments?
So, when Dr. Schiff is referring to the cut scores, am I able to be heard?
Move it closer to you.
Sorry. They are actually referencing performance level descriptors. These are narrative statements of a list of students' knowledge, skills, and abilities on what they're able to do. When we did the standard setting after the adoption of the 750, we used the performance level descriptors that had already been instated for the previous assessments to maintain the integrity of the Board's request. When the educators took those performance level descriptors and reviewed them, they placed the cut scores to identify what became that 750. And there is a larger gap between the 725 and 750 for ELA than there is in mathematics.
Would it be fair, just the last question, and then we move on, or other Board members may have comments or questions as well. Is it fair to say that the 2022 results are consistent with the preliminary data for 2023?
From preliminary data that we are seeing now, yes, the results from 2022 are consistent.
Yeah, that's all I have.
So, I'm sorry. So, just to clarify, this means that 41.3% of students are between 725 and 749? That's their score? Is that in the English Language Arts on this slide?
That's the difference between the 80.7 and the 39.4.
Right, so that's, that, those kids scored in between that number?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question. It's interesting to look at the results of the impact of us setting cut scores of 725 and 750. And I continue, I've expressed this before, I continue to wonder if that's the approach one should take when they're making a decision as to where to set cut scores based upon the optics of who passes and who doesn't. I mean, my gosh, if we only have 40% of kids passing English, it's much worse than if we have 80%. So it would seem that New Jersey could pat themselves on the back if we're having an 80% success rate, and it would be pretty difficult for Board members to sit up here and do something that would make that, that passing score lower and make us not look so good. But I challenge us all to think about how we approach this, and I think the way we should approach this is we should think to ourselves as to what do you need to know? What should a New Jersey student know, and what kind of level of mastery should they have on a subject matter for us to say, here's your certificate, you have succeeded, you should go on, you're ready? We used to say you're college and career-ready. Now we say you're graduation-ready, and I'm frankly not quite sure what graduation-ready may, means. I think it's kind of a nebulous term. But really, the heart of the matter is, I think that what we need to understand here on the Board is, if we're kind of deciding between 725 and 750, what's the difference in what a student's understanding is and level of mastery? And we could take it English Language Arts, we could take geometry and take Algebra I. And I know that, you know, it's 20 to 12, and you want to vote today, but I, I think we need to understand what the difference is in the level of mastery so that we can make an informed decision. I've asked this question now, I think I started a year ago, and I, I've never, maybe it's me, I don't think I've ever received an answer that I could process. And maybe you could give it a shot now, is to, maybe we'll just take English Language Arts. What's the difference in the level of mastery in terms like, how, I don't know, maybe, I've tried to do this before, maybe there's 100 or 500 items that you need to, that you would know if you're perfect, and we're saying, well, if you know 300 of them, you're 725, and four of them, you're 750. Can you put in context or explain this to me?
Vice President Mulva Hill, if I may, before my team does add to fully answer your question, to frame this discussion, I think it is also fair to put forward that the 725 cut score was a result of the work of various experts on teams, members of whom's names you've been given, to speak with, who devised that based on their expertise. And through multiple conversations, the Board decided that it was prudent at that time to have an even higher bar. And so our goal continues to be one in which we want to just inform the Board of where students are, looking at the possible effects of when you may, by some term, overreach, as I stated last month, the right standard is the 725, we believe. But to get into the question pool, I'm going to turn it to my team at the table in front of you, who can, I believe, elaborate on that once again.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Vice President Mulva Hill, so, again, I think, you know, the department's coming back at 725, right? We believe the 725 is the correct number based upon our conversations with-
Can you speak closer?
Yep. So, so the department is of the opinion that 725 is the correct number based upon our conversations with the Technical Advisory Committee, as well as, as the experts that we have engaged in this process. So the, the passage rate that we have up on the screen right now is not guiding our decision. It's not guiding what we're putting forward. We put forward 725 last year as what we believe at the department is the proper level, and we're putting forward at 725 again. To get to your second question relative to what needs to be mastered- To get to your second question relative to what needs to be mastered, as John had mentioned, we have performance-level indicators, right? They're narrative, essentially bullet points, correct, John? Of what you would need to, what each student should know at a particular level. And at that level, again, in the opinion of the experts, they put together the performance-level descriptors. So, to really kind of boil this down, I like to use math on because it's a little bit simpler in my mind, is one of those performance-level indicators is the student knows Pythagorean theorem. He knows how to add and subtract. He knows how to multiply. And that's what the performance-level indicators gauge, right? The particular student's mastery of these particular items and the performance-level indicators. And then those correlate towards a particular number that the student needs to achieve, whether that be through-- Again, each question has different number values, point values. So, they need to achieve a certain level of point value, or, excuse me, total points, based upon answering a certain number of questions. So, hypothetically, if the point value is the total to demonstrate mastery is 30 points across the breadth of the questions on the assessment, it could be 31-point questions, 10 three-point questions. The value of each question varies based upon their difficulty. Now, again, what needs to be demonstrated to show mastery at 725 versus 750 is different. The narrative that was put together by the experts is different. The 750, the performance-level indicators are more difficult to achieve than they are at 725, hence the score being higher. So, it's those performance-level indicators that guide what is necessary, or what, that level that demonstrates mastery on each assessment.
So, I appreciate the effort, but I didn't get an answer. I mean, I don't know, do you folks here on the board know that in English Language Arts, when we're voting today on 750 or 725, what the level of mastery will be on those topics? I don't think we do. So, where are we? And I don't think we're going to hear. Frankly, I think it's unfair of me to sit here now before we're about to vote to try to have you guys explain it to me. I wish you had done it earlier, but I don't know how you could do it now, because it's probably got to be a very long and complicated process. So, where does that leave us? To me, it leaves us to relying on the experts, right? That's what we keep hearing, you know? This is what the experts said, you're going to rely on the experts. And there's a lot to be said about that, you know? To not go off and try and to pontificate on something you know a lot about. But I can tell you, in my line of work, I have a lot of experts that work for me, and if I just blindly follow the experts, sometimes it wouldn't serve me well. I think I have to think about it as well, myself. The thing that troubles me is, we hear about our experts saying what the score should be, but when we look at the SAT and what their experts say, they have a different number than what we're suggesting should be a passing score. And so, I don't know which experts to listen to. It makes it a little difficult for me, but I'm troubled by this, not really understanding the difference. And again, I don't know how we're going to have it explained to us right here and now, but I can tell you, if I'm going to err, I'm going to err on the side of keeping standards high.
If I may respond--
Sure.
Mr. Vice President, the English Language Arts performance-level descriptors, in many cases, for the 725 and 750 differ by one word. They use minimally or generally at the 725, and just generally at 750.
Generally, even competent, or what is it?
Generally, are able to do a task related to a certain level of text. And for the English Language Arts, they have three levels of text that they describe, and the difference is that the 725 includes the same term that appears in the 750, as well as a slightly lower-level term as well.
So, minimally competent versus, what was the other?
Generally.
Generally. So, you're suggesting that we should graduate students, or the department, it's not you, you're one of the people, that are minimally proficient versus generally proficient?
If they can meet a minimum score? Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, I appreciate that, but I still, you know, haven't heard what they actually have mastered. So, anyway, but thank you for your time.
Are we in New Jersey really comfortable with kids that are just minimally competent? I'm looking, I've got lots of notes, and we have talked about this, and some questions we've asked have not been answered, but I just want to draw to everyone's attention. Earlier this year, United States Secretary, Education Secretary Miguel Cardona warned state departments, education departments throughout the county that they must keep academic standards high, instead of creating the pretense that current levels of student proficiency are acceptable. We're better than that, lectured Cardona. Our children deserve better than that. The first area where we must raise the bar is academic excellence. As much as the student learning crisis is about recovery, it's about setting higher standards for academic success in reading and math. I think, you know, we're having discussions, are kids going to possibly have to do portfolios? Absolutely. And maybe they're going to learn these things, because you want to know what the real experts are. Our students are the experts. They know whether they're doing well, they know where they are in the playing field amongst their peers, they're going to go off into the work world or to college, and they're going to say, I'm not really as prepared as I should be. That's a shame. We have an opportunity to hold a high standard. I think it's our responsibility to do that.
Thank you. I believe, sorry, I believe Dr. Ricker has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to the team for allowing me to be able to participate remotely. We're hanging, or, let me say it this way. I have two children in public school right now, so I'm fully invested in this conversation, just like any parent who might be listening to it right now. But I also recognize that this is a singular measure of performance. Education is a process. To expect that a 17- or an 18-year-old graduating from a public high school in the state of New Jersey is finished learning, or is a master in anything, I think that's a flawed premise. I think what we really need to recognize is providing multiple pathways for students to demonstrate mastery in certain topics as they developmentally progress, but also leaving them a lot of runway to continue to grow. The high-stakes standardized assessment is a requirement. We understand that. We all recognize that, and presently, the graduation requirements are what they are. But I do think that we do need to, in this case, or at least myself, let me talk for myself. I'm not a psychometrician, so I, when I look at percentages, when I look at the curvatures of students taking the assessment and where they're going to land on the curve, I do have to recognize that I have limited knowledge in how those items are constructed and where those students are going to end up on that particular assessment. And so, you know, we tried. We tried at the table, a different score. And I really, to this day, I don't know where the additional 25 points came from, you know, from 725 to 750, but we tried it. And what we learned when we tried it is that it didn't pan out to show us, I think, that presently, that construct was going to give us a good look at where students are. I mean, anybody can create a test that is going to have a majority of students, you know, whoever's taking a test, adults or children, fail it. You could raise or create items that would have a very, very small number of students who would be able to pass it. I don't know that that's necessarily the purpose, and I don't know that really, that is the ends of education. I think the idea with education is to create an opportunity and an environment where the human continues to learn, even after exiting the 12th grade year. So, I respect and recognize the passion and importance of this conversation that we continue to have over and over again, but I do believe that, in this instance, we did something, and we saw the result of it, and now we have the opportunity to make a correction and go back to what was recommended in terms of the psychometrics of the assessment. Again, this is one measure. What's the most important measure that predicts academic or future academic success? And the answer is, it depends on who you talk to. Some folks will tell you it's essential skills, some folks will tell you it's behavior, some folks will tell you it's the composition of the home, some folks will tell you it's the academic level of the parent or guardian. It really depends on who you go to, because it's not an exact science. So, for us, I think we need to really consider what we're doing and whether or not we're creating a scenario where more students will be successful, or where more students will continue to struggle, which then puts them on a pathway that perhaps, you know, puts limitations on their continued learning. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. I would like everyone to first get their ability to ask something, and then we'll go back to people for a second round.
Kathy, I have my hand raised.
Elaine, I can't even see that, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. You can't see me either, even though I have it open.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, quick question. It seems when you were explaining it, you mentioned that these scores that we're going to choose today will be next year for 24 and for 25. Does that mean that in 25, we can reevaluate again?
We will have a new assessment in that year, so we're currently having RFP, a Request for Proposals, out for our next generation of assessments. So, this decision is a decision for the graduating classes of 24 and 25.
Thank you very much.
Elaine, anything else?
No, no, no. But I thank you for that clarification, because it seems to me that-- I'm sorry about the echo-- --that we are still dealing with students who suffered from not being in school, or from not applying themselves completely during the time when there were problems with the COVID and all the other things that came with it. But I should think that, at the end of 25, we should really say, okay, we've done everything we can do to bring them up to where we want them to be at this point, and then reevaluate. And that's why I asked the question. And thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions if I could ask. So, in-- Oh, microphone again? It is on. Are you not hearing it? How's this? All right, thank you. So, I've been struggling with 725 or 750. As you all know, we've had so many meetings, and I keep asking myself, what does this cut score mean to the students? How is this going to affect our students across the state? One of the questions I wanted to please ask is, I've heard from a lot of suburban superintendents, I've heard from the New Jersey Principal and Supervisory Association and their recommendations, I've heard from a specific superintendent, by reading his article, that actually, some of the children who did not-- Students, I want to say students, who did not do well on the test, did very well on SATs and got into four-year universities. This leads me to ask if the test is a good test, because I don't know. I've heard mixed things, I've actually heard no mixed things. I've heard it's not a great test for students to actually demonstrate their knowledge of ELA 10 and Algebra I. The other problem for our students is that they may have had Algebra I in eighth through ninth grade, and they're taking their test in their junior year, because we used to give them it end of course, so it was fresh in their minds. It's not that anymore, which is one of the reasons your PSAT score doesn't really affect me, because it's before they have ELA 10. So, it seems incongruent that we're looking at that to me. But there's such a discrepancy for me in the English and Language Arts score, 40 basis points between the 25 points that you're asking us to go with. And I'm curious, twofold. One of the things I'm asking, please, is, and I sent an email yesterday, you might not have seen it. When we looked at these scores across the state, did we happen to notice how our urban and rural districts did in contrast with perhaps the suburban districts? Did we happen to look at north, central, and south, and how they did in contrast with one another? Not looking at by district, but looking at where we need to support our students the most? Because my next question, when you answer that, will be, what happens? What kind of remediation would these students actually achieve and get if they did not pass this? What are we looking at? Because we have no real control on local districts and what they provide to our students. Those are a couple of my questions. If you could just please--
Sure. Our analysis was similar to what we did with NJSLA. We reviewed all of the disaggregated areas, including by race, ethnicity, students who are economically disadvantaged, special education, and English language learners as well. And we saw similar results. So, those achievement gaps, which I spoke about a while ago when I presented, and John presented--
For 25 years.
The state achievement, right? The state achievement data is not different than what we saw with this assessment as well.
And can you lead-- Are you able to give us any clarity on if a student doesn't pass this? I know you said they have the--
Yeah.
--different options, that they can do menu options, but in reality, can you lend a little discussion about what does happen to those students? Because we did read on things that were sent to us, they may or may not be able to be in sports, or the arts, or different extracurriculars, but then we read from the New Jersey Principal and Supervisory Association, they may be taken out of other classes, whether it's history, geometry, geography, social sciences, because there's no set time, that there are teachers available to help bolster the children and their knowledge.
Yeah, districts have individual decision-making authority to address the needs of the students as they feel they're able, and it varies from district to district. We've heard that. And we actually have part of this presentation that speaks to that directly, and about what we feel the anticipated impact of portfolio appeals will be. So, if I beg the patience of the board--
I think we have a couple more questions.
Of course.
The English language learners, would that account for the wide discrepancy of the 40 points? Would the ELA being such, as Arcilio asked, such a huge differentiation between 725 and 750 compared to the math, which wasn't, the deviation wasn't that great?
I don't think there was a--
No, I don't think so.
--unified subpopulation change.
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think the English language learners would account for that difference.
Okay, thank you. Sylvia, did you have questions, Jack?
Actually, I think what I'd rather do is, I'm going to wait until everybody asks their questions, because some of my questions are getting answered, and then maybe at the end of the presentation, if I still have any, I'll bring them up then.
And I know Andy and Arcilio both asked to continue the discussion before we continue with the presentation. I think that Arcilio asked first.
Yeah, just to be clear, when you talk about standards for New Jersey, the New Jersey student performance standards, we're not lowering the bar of our standards, to be clear.
Correct, that's correct.
Right? And so, what we're talking about is student demonstrating proficiency against those standards in this assessment, right? In being eligible for graduation.
That's correct.
So, just want to be clear, because I think, again, it was insinuated that we were lowering standards, and we are not. That's not what we're voting on today. So, just want to be crystal clear about that. That said, I also want to recognize that the students that would be most impacted with maintaining the 750 score as opposed to 725, based on the achievement gaps that you talked about earlier, are Black and Latino kids, particularly in the urban districts. Am I correct in saying that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Not in the rural, also.
I'm sorry?
Not in the rural as well?
Yeah, but again, let me just finish my point, and that is, to the point Dr. Ricker made earlier, what we are holding those students to is a standard that may be unfair to them and to their families. And so, when I think about the impact of those students, and the missed opportunity for taking or being able to take more courses towards something that they're more interested in, whether it's-- whether it's preparing them for the workforce or preparing them for college, they could potentially be pulled out of that coursework. And based on, again, their performance on this exam and having, if they fail, having to spend additional time taking portfolio review or other types of remedial-type coursework. It seems, you know, based on what the data you provided us in 2022 and now, again, the preliminary data in 2023, as Dr. Ricker mentioned, we required the department to test our desire out in setting higher cut scores. And now we see the result of that, and the result is that the two years provided us essentially with consistent data. So based on that, it would appear to me that the right thing to do for students is to not subject them to uncertainty in terms of their graduation or in terms of their coursework in their senior year and really emphasize the fact that to require them to do remedial coursework in the same environment, in the same school, potentially with the same teachers, again, may not be the best outcome for the student. And so based on what I'm hearing today and the information that we received during discussions of our committee, it leads me to believe that the department's recommendation for 725 would likely be the best result or outcome for our students, particularly the ones that I mentioned earlier, that population. So I just wanted to mention that. And please let me know if I am incorrect in anything that I just stated.
No, I think that's correct.
Vice President Mulvaugh.
Yes. I'm really not worried about the kids in suburbia in New Jersey. I never have been. I'm concerned with the kids in the urban districts, and that's always been my focus. And we don't want to disrupt their lives. We don't want to make things more difficult for them. I'm with you, Arcilio, on that. But the one thing I've heard, and I've heard it many times, is this whole idea of the bigotry of low expectations, right? And, you know, Arcilio, when you were speaking, you were saying that the standards may be unfair to them. I don't know about that, whether we should take that perspective. And I, look, I know that you're...
Not the standards, because the standards are the New Jersey Student Performing Standards. So it's not the standards. It's this assessment tool.
This particular test.
So it's a difference. I just want to make that clear. The difference between the standards and this assessment...
So you're saying the assessment may be unfair?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, I don't know...
I'm sorry, Andy.
No, it's okay. We can have a dialogue.
Just to say that the standard, I mean, the assessment may not be a good predictor of these students and their performance against our New Jersey Student Performing Standards. So just wanted to be clear about that.
Okay. Fair enough. I guess one of the things we're concerned is that we're going to set the cut score too high. And I'd like to go back and look at what the performance was of students in New Jersey in 1918. Let's just look at 2019. So in 2019, with a cut score of 750, and yes, it was the PARC test, it was a different test, I get that. But in 2019, if you take the average of geometry and algebra, right, because we had geometry test and we had Algebra I test, and now we have one that's combined, if you take the average, where am I here? In 2019, 37% were deemed to be passing. At 750, we have 49% passing. So far more students are passing at 750 than back in 2019 with learning loss and with the fact that the test is not given at end of assessment. I mean, excuse me, at the end of course. So you would think that, you know, kids are not going to remember as well, they're not going to do as well. One can say that maybe they're a little bit more mature and they've gotten some other coursework that may help out, that would swing it the other way. But why was it okay in 2019, but it's not okay all of a sudden now? Probably because what I keep reading, which is the pandemic, right? We have to recognize there's a pandemic and we need to lower our standards. I mean, that's a, kids are going to get upset. That was one of the reasons that we're lowering these test scores, is because kids are going to get upset. That doesn't fly with me. I don't think it's going to serve them in the long haul if we just don't ever do anything that'll get kids upset. So, look, I know that everyone here wants to do the right thing, and it's a hard pill to swallow to keep standards high and force people to work harder and have kids disappointed, but I think it's the right thing. And I'll speak to the portfolio appeals process and the concerns, but again, looking at past numbers after you guys have done your presentation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to ask a question at this time? I see Joe Ricker's hand up. Mary Beth and Ned have not spoken yet either, but if they don't indicate they need to speak now, we'll go ahead with Dr. Ricker.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President.
You know what? I'm going to, I'll wait if it's okay, and I'll come back to this after the presentation. I apologize.
I apologize.
Thank you, sir. I understand. Hearing no other comments at this time.
President Goldenberg?
Oh, Mary Beth Gacy's hand is up.
Please, let her speak first.
Please.
Thank you, President Goldenberg. You know, I have to agree with Andy, but I also understand Arcilio's concerns. And I think everyone needs to know how important this is to every member of this board to get this right. But making it easier for students is not, as Andy said, is not always giving them the tools that later on in life are going to help them. And allowing, this is how I feel, if the 725, as the gentleman said before, states that the students are minimally prepared or have a minimal understanding. I believe you said that when we were asking you about the difference in the ELA. I have a very difficult time saying it's okay for students after this time in school to go forward wherever they're going, to a job, to learn a trade, to go to college, when they are only minimally prepared. I would like to hear about the portfolio appeals process, just to see, you know, I would like to hear a lot more about that, just to see what they would have to go through if they are not able to meet the 750 cut score.
Thank you, President Goldenberg.
Thank you.
President Goldenberg?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So if I may just help to elaborate before turning it back over to the team, if we don't want to hear from additional board members at this time, I want to clarify that the 750 cut score is an extra-high standard. It's not a high standard. 725 is our high standard. And we're spending a great amount of time, and rightfully so, on an assessment that many would like to see not given to our students. But be that as it may, there are repercussions, there are downhill effects, there are adverse experiences that our students will continue to face from the adding on to a high standard of 725. And what Vice President Mulvaugh stated earlier about the college and career readiness versus the graduation distinction, I think while it is noble to have a college and career distinction with over 3,000 colleges and universities and with myriad of career opportunities, to think that a student can graduate ready to enter into every career, every college, and be successful, I think leaves room for us to further explore what our true responsibility is. And I think we continue as a state that is historically ranked in the top, if not the top-performing public school system in the country at delivering results that allow our students to be successful on multiple measures, that we are doing a lot right and to work to do everything correctly or to be perfect with an arbitrary forward reach can have more detrimental effects. And this is why our presentation on the portfolio appeals process, we believe, will help to inform your decision. So I thank you, President Goldenberg.
Thank you. I see a hand up, but I don't know who it belongs to.
It's... It's Mr. Butcher. Yes, Dr. Butcher.
Yes, Dr. Butcher.
Go ahead.
Hi. I just want to let you know I'm in the middle of a doctor's waiting room right now. So I'm going to need to make this very short and to the point, but I have been listening at extent. And I must tell you that I wholeheartedly agree with all of the comments previously made by Dr. Ricker and with the comments recently made by Arcilio. I want to really jump on the points that Arcilio made about, we're not lowering standards. The standards are staying high, and the commissioner just pointed to that. This isn't an issue of raising standards. It's an issue of looking at a cut score that is most appropriate for our students throughout the state of New Jersey. So I just wanted to chime in and say that, except for Dr. Ricker's comment that he has two kids in our school system, I wholeheartedly agree with everything he had to say and with everything that Mr. Aponte had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck at the doctor.
Thank you.
We've been forward. Thank you. We are, if no one else wants to speak at this time, let's go ahead and hear the rest of the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. If a student does not meet the cut score on the NJGPA and also does not meet the cut scores on any of the alternative assessments, in order to demonstrate graduation readiness, the student must complete a portfolio appeal process. We would now like to examine how setting the NJGPA cut score at 750 may impact the number of students who are required to complete the portfolio appeals process. This slide shows portfolio appeal usage from 2016 through 2022, with 2020 and 2021 data not present due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The data collected in 2016 and 2017 was done in a way where it captured only students who utilized both ELA and math portfolio appeal. Compared to 2018 and 2019, the portfolio appeals almost doubled in 2022. And again, this is attributed to the canceled testing in 2020 and 2021. Utilizing the data from the NJGPA Spring 2022 Administration as well as the data from the alternative assessments, it is anticipated that the number of portfolios appeals is going to significantly increase. It is expected that portfolio appeals will balloon to an unprecedented level of approximately 40,000 appeals in English Language Arts, and mathematics may increase to nearly 22,000, which again, is very different than the number of portfolio appeals since 2016. While districts determine how they administer the portfolio appeals differently, there are impacts to students going through this process. Some districts assign students to a portfolio appeals class, which would take the place of one of the electives that the students would be able to take, while other districts limit students' participation in certain programs based upon their completion of the graduation assessment requirement. Now we turn to the department's recommendations for the state board's consideration. The recommendations from the department are to... ...the alternative assessments to the equivalent of the NJGPA 725 cut score as determined from the alignment study and presented earlier in this presentation. The main justification for this recommendation is that the data finds that a 750 cut score lowered passing rates on the alternate assessments and increased the probability that significantly more students will graduate through the portfolio appeals process. In addition, we saw from the alignment study, the 750 cut score represents a significant change in the alternative assessment passing rate, which was significantly lower than the passing rates identified since 2016. Specifically, the alignment study found that the cut score for the evidence-based reading and writing SAT would be set 90 points above what college boards considers college-ready. In addition, the impact of the COVID-19 public health emergency greatly impacted the mental health and wellness of our students, and setting the graduation requirements at the 725 cut score for the classes of 2024 and 2025 is prudent. On behalf of the Director of Assessments, John Bozany, and Special Assistant Chris Huber, we appreciate your time and attention, and of course, are here to answer any of your questions.
Could we go back to Slide 12, please? I'm somewhat of a math statistical person.
Sure.
And I'm just curious, how did you, right now, are there 26,000 students that are affected in the state? Is that what the 2022 ELA in math means, that there are 26,000 students?
There's...
Yeah. So we have about 100,000 students per grade level, and they could either qualify for math or for ELA.
But you said last month that they would be required to take the entire test or they would flunk entirely if they flunked one portion. No?
No, they have to take either ELA, math, or both, depending upon whether or not they met the requirements.
So they have the opportunity to focus.
That's correct.
But in the state, there are 26,000 students who would have to avail of a...
So it's not necessarily equate to students, right? So it's 26,000 ballpark portfolio appeals that were sent into the department. So you may have students that submitted it for both ELA and math, students submitted it only for ELA, or students that only submitted it for math. So the way that the NJGPA works, right, it's two separate cut scores, two separate subjects, and you need to demonstrate a passing score in both. So you could have a student that achieves a passing score on the NJGPA in ELA but not in math, and hasn't met, again, hasn't met any of the alternative assessments in math either, and therefore would only submit a portfolio appeal in math, and then vice versa.
Thank you. The only reason I ask is the NJPSA wrote us there were 60,000 students affected, and the ELC wrote an article, there were 100,000 affected by the cut score variation. So I'm just trying to understand what you, as the DOE, is...
So it's individual, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
In this table, the third column, the total students, that is the total number of unique students who submitted a portfolio appeal. The total ELA is just total appeals received for the ELA component, and the total math is just appeals for mathematics.
And the 2023, which isn't listed, would be those students from 2022 submitting those portfolios for 2023?
No. For 2023, the graduation requirements were waived.
Right.
In 2024, the estimates of the 40,000 total ELA portfolio appeals and the 22,000 estimated mathematics appeals are based off of the performance from the NJGPA. And originally, the statistics were done off of the performance of the class of 2022, or sorry, class of 2023, which took its test in 2022, which now our preliminary data is showing us that it is very similar. So I have more confidence in our estimates. And then based on the percent passing on the alternate assessments that was presented in the school performance reports last month.
Yes.
We did a calculation on that and made the estimation of how many students would still be left out that would not have satisfied the graduation requirement yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
So the top line, just to clarify a little bit further, President Goldenberg, the top line are those students, so it would be in the class of '24. So it's those students that have taken it this spring?
This spring. Right. 23, 4, 24. Sylvia, it looks like you're ready to ask something.
Yeah, actually...
Or say something.
I, so if I'm a person who doesn't think testing is the end-all or be-all of predicting what future successes would be, you know, some people test well, some people don't, sometimes you've got a good day... sometimes you've got a good day, sometimes you don't. And when I say if I'm a person that thinks that way, I am a person that thinks that way. So with that said, obviously there has to be measures of benchmarking, of telling how our students are doing. So my question is, or I'm not really sure exactly how to place it, of that 41.3% difference that were the 725 to 749, and the 7% difference that was the 725 through 749 in math and English, is there a way, and I think when I asked this yesterday, Chris, I might have been like not, probably saying just as badly as I am right now, to tell how many of those students that access the portfolio are then successful? Are they, like, that whole group, I'm guessing, is, meet their graduation requirements? So it's probably the ones below that are, that would be a bigger concern to not reach the graduation requirement. And my other, and this is like before I forget it, is my biggest concern today and why I'm stammering so much is, the thing that Kathy said earlier, is this a good test? That's, like, now I, I don't know if any of this matters, if it's not a good test. How do, how do I know that, am I giving the best test that I can?
So let me answer the first question first. So we don't know the answer to that, right? So these students are still going through that process, right? So they, it's, again, not only the portfolio appeals, but the menu of options, right? So if you don't meet the 750 benchmark, you have the opportunity to meet the particular benchmark, whether it be in SAT math or some other, on that menu of assessments, right? So if they are going to get over this graduation requirement, you know, to pass a state graduation assessment or an alternative, that's what they need to do. They need, it could be a portfolio appeals, it could be SAT math, or it could be, you know, it could be ELA, or, excuse me, SAT, whatever they call it now, verbal writing, whatever it is. So it's difficult to say that everyone in that 725 to 750 is going to have to avail themselves of the portfolio appeals. They may, but we can't say definitively, right, there's, it's not a one-to-one ratio, I guess is the easiest way to put it.
But by and large, and actually, that's a bad sentence, by and large, that makes it sound like some of them don't matter. Do all of the kids in that group, regardless of how it is that they get to meet the requirements, do they all get to meet the requirements? They meet it? Or is there a big bunch of them, or any of them, that don't meet it?
So for the class of '23, we don't know yet, right? So this is, for the class of '23, it's an ongoing process, right? I mean, they have an extended runway, not only, you know, up to the graduation ceremony in June, a little bit longer, to meet these requirements. So they may meet it by portfolio appeals, they may meet it by getting the requisite score in the SATs. So it's difficult to say, as we sit here right now-
About historically, like, forget this one and go, like, we only know what we know.
Right.
Do we know that that's the case in the past?
That-
That they do, whether it is through the portfolio or the menu of options, that those kids in that group, they do meet graduation requirements or they don't?
Well, it's difficult to, again, it's, we're, it's not a direct correlation between NJGPA and what we had previously, which was end-of-course assessment for NJSLA either. So it's difficult to really make that comparison as well.
If I could jump in, Sylvia, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Like I said, so if you take the average of geometry and algebra in 2019, 37%, only 37% passed, and kids were able to go with the alternative assessments and portfolio review, our graduation rates didn't change. So don't think by passing, by voting for 750, you're going to knock the graduation rates down. I've asked this question of a lot of professionals, and they assure me that if a kid wants to graduate, they will be able to graduate.
So I think, again, Vice President Mulvihill, those are not, it's not an accurate comparison, right? It's, A, and John is much smarter than I on this than I will ever be, but they're very different assessments, right? We're talking about an end-of-course assessment that was given at the end of Algebra I or the end of Geometry, as opposed to a comprehensive test that's given in 11th grade. The end-of-course assessments, right, just as a reminder, Algebra I and Geometry are course requirements that you need to take in order to graduate. So they could be taken at any point throughout high school in order to graduate. So we may be dealing with a senior taking Geometry and a junior taking Algebra I. So the direct correlation between what you may achieve, what a student may achieve on an end-of-course assessment for Algebra I and Geometry is not equivalent to what they may have gotten on NJGPA. Additionally, the performance level indicators, which we, or performance level descriptors, I say indicators, performance level descriptors that we utilize for NJGPA are different than those performance level descriptors for an end-of-course assessment in Algebra I and Geometry.
I think, all right, so, again, I don't think that the test is, in general, the best predictor of how great the kids are going to do in the future. I also don't think it's a great predictor of how fantastic their teachers are. I think that it's a really bad predictor of our educators, because our educators are, we've got the best ones in the country. So I think those things need to always be separate items, and I think sometimes they get pushed together. But again, my biggest takeaway and question from the day is if President Goldenberg is hearing in the field from, across the board, that this is not a good test, that's really the biggest concern. No matter what the number is, if it's not a good test, the numbers are relevant and we're doing a bad thing.
I can't, you know, I don't, I've not seen the test, but I am hearing from the field that it is not indicative of how a student will do or has done in the classroom or will do upon leaving high school. And there was an article by Dr. Lasusa, we all got, Lasasa, Lasusa, that spoke to, and he's in a very affluent, probably, district in the Chatham's, but he spoke to the fact that the percentage of students that did not do well actually did very well out of that cohort on SATs in both math and Language Arts. And I guess the point was being made, and he's a superintendent that's, I think, somehow on the top of the New Jersey Superintendent Field Association. So the implication is that it is not indicative of how a student will do. Again, these are the experts that really see day-to-day student activity, that, you know, it's one thing for us to opine on this, it's one thing for a score to be suggested and asked for, but the individuals from the New Jersey PSA and the individuals from the ASA that had apparently gotten together and spoken about this, they have credence in their, what they see every day. And I don't want to also minimize what you said about taking a test is not that day in time if someone had a fever or someone didn't feel well, or, and there's a million reasons that a good student may not do as well one day in time. But-
Thank you. This is, that question I had not even fathomed, if this is not a good test.
It's just because I listen to the field a lot, that I'm sure everyone does, but Mary Beth.
So if you could clarify for me, if I'm looking at total-
We're unable to see and hear remotely, correct?
Plus video and audio.
Did something just pop up on the screen differently?
Yeah, holy land for a better, it's like a, some kind of an-
I'm going to text the team now. Thank you. We'll be back up and running momentarily. There's a battery change that's going on, and the meeting has paused. Okay, thank you so much.
The room has video back but not audio yet.
Yes, we're working to rectify any second now, they're telling me. Looks like a great time for a 10-second stretch.
I think we're back up, President Goldberg.
All right. If everyone who is in the room can, again, please be seated. I think that I was outvoted on a two-minute break. There you go. Man to my left was like, no. Do you guys need a break? Board members, do you need a break?
Yeah.
No. Hearing none. We'll continue.
Okay, thank you. So my question is this. I'm looking at the slide number 12. Total ELA, 40,000 students estimated to take the, have to use the portfolio appeals, 22,000 for math. Are those numbers indicating that those students have already exhausted the menu of options, and because of that, they, so they've done the menu of options, haven't demonstrated proficiency in any of the menu of options, they take the test, because we're all saying you could have a bad day on a test. How about all the menu of options? You have a bad day on all the menu of options? I believe there are in place opportunities for kids to be successful, and if we don't have a high enough bar, maybe we really have a problem getting kids up to where they should be to be ready to graduate, whatever we're using now, college and career ready, I was always comfortable with, graduation ready. If those are our numbers, and they have exhausted the menu of options, then maybe they need to use their study hall and some things so that we have young people prepared to go to the military, to go to a job, to go on to community college, or a college where they're going, and now they're saying, well, you're not prepared, so we're going to put you in a remedial class, and that money's coming out of your own pocket. I think we have a responsibility, we're looking at those numbers, and those numbers include the menu of options, we have a problem and we need to think about that.
So first, the 40,000 to the 22,000 is our estimate, right? However, as we said, to raise the cut score to 750, the menu of option cut scores go up as well, and go up exponentially as well. So by process of raising the cut score to 750 and raising the menu of options, those cut scores as well, which we have to do, those students that can't achieve 750 based upon our projections are also not going to be able to achieve the cut score on the menu of options. Hence, their only alternative, the only option in order to meet the graduation assessment requirement to graduate is through a portfolio appeals.
So do we have a slide on what the menu of options would go up to?
Yep. Which one was it? Yes, we do. One for math and one for ELA.
Page nine.
And to address the second part of the question, I think what we're talking about here is what our, in our very long process, and this is an extensive process, between the Technical Advisory Committee and our experts that we talked about, it's those experts that are part of ASA, they're part of PSA, that are involved in this process and setting the performance level descriptors, I look at John because I say it wrong every time. It's those performance level descriptors that determine what that graduation-ready line is, right? Graduation-ready or not graduation-ready. Have you met those performance-level descriptors to a specific level, a specific satisfaction, to be graduation versus not graduation-ready? Again, this is not a college entrance exam. This is a graduation-ready versus not graduation-ready. So what we're trying to determine is whether you have met those performance-level descriptors. What we don't want to do, and I think this is what Jordan had alerted to in talking about the portfolio appeals, and I think Board Member Aponte had as well, we're not dealing with the students in taking AP English, AP Calculus, right? We're talking about those students right now, right, that may not, they may have had a bad day, they may have had a fever, they may have had a cold, they may struggle with certain areas, and they may not meet those performance-level indicators at 750, or maybe even 725. But we want to give them every opportunity, we don't want this to be, we want to give them every opportunity to demonstrate graduation readiness. So they can move on, whether it be to the military, to work, or to college.
So I have, in my position, taken young people to recruiting centers to take the ASVAT. You can only take that test three times. And then, if you do not pass, get a certain score, you're not eligible to be in the military. So we're taking young people who possibly are not prepared against these standards. They're taking a test, an important test, and they're not passing that test. And so I say to myself, what are we doing that we're having kids leave a school and not be ready to take that kind of test? Now, if they don't pass the test, the recruiting center can say, you know what, here's a pamphlet, we're going to go through, here's all this stuff online, you study for this thing on your own, and you can come back and take that. Now, that test is important to that kid because they want to be part of the military, so they're doing the remediation, a lot of it on their own. My thought is, why, if we're a school, if we're in education, dedicated education, are we not making sure that while kids are still in school, that we're making sure they get the remediation they may need so that they can move on into college, career, military, whatever they decide to do next? Why are we not making sure that they're ready?
I think we're making just a nuanced, different argument, and I think what you're saying is very important. But here's what the real effect is. You have a student that got a 560 on their English reading and writing SAT score. According to us, at a 750 cut score, they are not high school graduation-ready. Yet they got a 560, 80 points higher than what the college board says, is college-ready? Is going to be successful in college? I mean, that's the reality of this. 60% of the kids are anticipated not to pass this particular assessment in English Language Arts, set at 750. But then in the alternate assessments, this cut score says that a kid that gets a 560 on their SAT reading and writing assessment, which is highlighted on the screen, is not graduation-ready, according to the state of New Jersey.
Mary Beth.
When most people, I'm sorry, if I could just finish this call.
Sure, sorry.
When most people would feel that a 560 is not a bad SAT score, and will be able to help that child get into a relatively competitive- to help that child get into a relatively competitive college or university and be successful.
If I could turn that around, to be fair, you referenced the English. If you go to the math, SAT says you need a 530 to be college-ready. And we're saying 440 is okay.
If I could also add a point of clarification, if you don't mind, Andy, just pushing back a little bit on Chris's point earlier about the AP coursework. Would you agree that the NJGPA is not a criteria for being accepted or approved to take the AP coursework?
Hundred percent, yep.
And so are there students who could have likely not done well in the NJGPA still be enrolled in the AP test corps because it's based on their academic performance within their schools?
Absolutely.
And last point, we said a lot about the SATs and I look at the SATs as I factor that in as well in my decisions. However, let's not dismiss the fact that there's many studies out there that would indicate that the SATs are not a good predictor of student success in college. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, the college boards did do a peer-reviewed study that indicated what the success rate would be of children at a particular cut score. But to your point, it's one assessment. There's lots of indications.
My question, you not answer my question. My question is, is there robust research out there that would indicate that the SATs are not a good predictor of students being successful in college? There is, and I know there is.
Okay, I'm certain you're.
And I will refer to Dr. Nancy Kanter at Rutgers University to confirm what I just said.
Can we just go back to your example for a second? The 560, like hypothetically, 560, we're holding it at 750, so 560 would not be good. But then wouldn't it also not be good at 725?
Well, this is the cut score that the alignment study for 725. So what we were talking about is what were the standards, standards is a bad word, what were the cut score equivalents since 2016? And the cut scores were similar to what the alignment is at 725. It is dissimilar than what it was at 750.
I'm sorry, I'm good. I think I'm just, maybe I'm just confused.
If I can.
Yeah, President Goldberg.
That was, I spoke to Dr. Repellet, he was our commissioner, about that. And I think it was set at a bar that would help students. At that time, we didn't go through it again. We hadn't reassessed them. And so that was the bar set by the Department of Ed before we were on the state board, certainly, maybe not a couple of us. But does that answer your question?
I guess maybe I'm confused.
So, yeah.
Because if it's 80 points too high at 750, isn't it still 55 points too high at 725?
So let me, let me kind of, so what we have up there now, so if you look at the last column, the alignment to 750 NJGPA is cut score. So in order to use SAT EBRW as an alternative to passing the NJGPA for ELA, you need to achieve a score of 570 or higher at 750. At a 725 cut score, in order to use the SAT EBRW as an alternative to passing the NJGPA, you have to achieve a 450 or higher, based upon our alignment study.
Okay, thank you. That clears it up. Thank you.
Students could do instead of the test, right, Chris?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Uber, sorry. All right, I see that Joe Rica is patiently at his hand up and then if no one objects, we should probably go ahead with the vote at that point. But Dr. Rica, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you so much, Madam President. And again, I just, thanks to everybody for all of the important contributions. And Mr. Aponte, I just, I can't agree with you more. I think that you are hitting on, and it makes a lot of sense to me, in that you've been so immersed in this work for so many years. You know, you're hitting major points that are important for all of us to recognize insofar as there is no singular measure and there never will be, you know, to predict success in college, career, or whatever, as children matriculate at a school. And Madam President, what I was gonna ask was if the department is complete in terms of the information they're sharing with us and considering the hours and hours and months and months of work that's going into this process, I was gonna ask if maybe we can move along and have a vote. So thank you so much.
We would after we heard from you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for, thank you, sir. All right, if no one objects, we'll go ahead for the vote. Dr. Rica, put your hand down. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and take the vote now. Roll call vote, please.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Let me go back. Yes, another country heard from, Dr. Johnson.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the 725 score as recommended by the Department of Education.
Thank you very much. I have a motion. Thank you, sir. I have a motion on the table. May I please ask for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Rica. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Hearing none. Please, Director Shonner, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Arcelia Aponte?
Just to be clear, this is a vote not on standards because we're holding a high standard in New Jersey. I vote to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Mary Beth Berry?
No.
Elaine Bobrov?
Yes.
The team is not here. Ron Butcher?
Yes.
Jack Fornaro? Mary Beth Gazy?
No.
Ned Johnson?
Yes.
Joseph Rica?
Yes.
Sylvia Sylvia?
No.
Andrew Mulvahill? Kathy Goldenberg?
As Arcelia would say, to be clear, I am listening to the experts in the field who feel that 725 should be the cut score. And I vote to approve the resolution.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five. You have six yes votes, one, two, three, four, five noes. Your motion passes.
That's really tough, but.
Madam President, as the chair of the assessment committee, I just wanted to thank the entire board for this robust discussion and for their passion in contributions to this discussion. It was a very tough vote. It's been a tough few weeks and months in this discussion, but I greatly respect my fellow board members and their views. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Now, let's please take a five-minute break. We ready? All right, thank you very much, everyone. We're gonna start again. Diane Shonner, would you please call, roll? Thank you.
Arcelia Aponte? Mary Beth Berry?
Here.
Elaine Bobrov? Ron Butcher had to leave. Jack Fornaro? Mary Beth Gazy?
Present.
Ned Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. Joseph Rica?
I'm here.
Sylvia Sylvia?
Here.
Andrew Mulvahill? Kathy Goldenberg?
Here.
Now, we're gonna go ahead with Autumn E., Commissioner.
Thank you, President Goldenberg. I am presenting today a first discussion, amendments to Chapter 14, Special Education. Chapter 14 sets forth the rules for providing programs and services to students with disabilities. The regulations assist local educational agencies in providing special educational services, make clear the procedures for how a student enters and exits a special education program, and evaluate the effectiveness of services provided to students. Two proposed amendments will address the provision of related services for students with disabilities. The First Amendment will allow for virtual related services in limited circumstances, and the Second Amendment will clarify the role of physical therapists and physical therapy assistants. From the Division of Educational Services are Kathy Ailing, Assistant Commissioner, and Kim Murray, Director of the Office of Special Education, who will present the proposed amendments and respond to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And unfortunately, Kim Murray was not able to be here today. But thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, President Goldenberg, Vice President Mulvahill, and members of the board. I am happy to be here today to share our limited proposed amendments to Chapter 14 of the Administrative Code. Chapter 14 ensures that students with disabilities receive a free, appropriate public education as required by the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, commonly referred to as the IDEA, and relevant state law. The amendments I am discussing today are limited in scope and designed to ensure that students with disabilities ensure that students with disabilities receive the related services which are required by their individualized education programs, or IEPs. The first proposed amendment addresses the provision of physical therapy. Currently, Chapter 14 has inconsistent language, which is creating confusion in the field. The citation on the left, found in Subchapter 3, states that "physical therapy may be provided by physical therapy assistants under the direction of a physical therapist." The citation on the right, found in Subchapter 5, states that "physical therapy assistants shall work in the presence and under the supervision of a certified physical therapist." In order to clarify and provide consistency between the two sections, and to align our requirements with current state licensing requirements, we are proposing amendments to clarify that physical therapy assistants, or PTAs, can be provide, physical therapy services, excuse me, can be provided to services with disabilities by physical therapy assistants, PTAs, working under the supervision of a certified physical therapist. The certified physical therapist is still assessing the student, writing the student's physical therapy goals and objectives, and directing the work of the physical therapy assistant, but would no longer require to be present in the physical space when therapy is being provided. Special education regulations currently permit the provision of physical therapy by a physical therapy assistant when the supervising physical therapist is an employee of the school district. A physical therapist must possess a minimum of a master's degree in physical therapy and have successfully completed the required clinical experience and passed a written exam. A physical therapy assistant, or PTA, possesses a minimum of an associate's degree, has completed a two-year PTA training program, and successfully completed clinical experience and passed a written exam. Professional licensure requirements for physical therapists and PTAs, and the guidelines for providing services, are established through the New Jersey Division of Consumer Affairs, and are governed by New Jersey Administrative Code Title 13, Law and Public Safety, Chapter 39A, State Board of Physical Therapy. 39A sets forth the role of a physical therapy assistant. The highlighted text on this slide is the requirement that PTAs may only work under the supervision of licensed physical therapists. The regulations set forth in Chapter 39 define general supervision as "supervision by a physical therapist in which the supervising physical therapist is available at all times by telecommunications, but is not required to be on-site for direction and supervision." Further, the supervising physical therapist shall assess, on an ongoing basis, the ability of the PTA to perform the selected interventions as directed. The scope of the work of a PTA, as defined in Title 13, Chapter 39, is limited. PTAs may initiate treatment only at the direction of and the supervision of a physical therapist. They may document the provision of treatment in a record, but the physical therapist is required to review and co-sign the entries. The PTA may collect data during an assessment conducted by the physical therapist, but the interpretation of that data is only made by the supervising physical therapist. Lastly, the PTA may not perform an assessment, make a diagnosis, develop or modify a plan of care. They are implementing the plan of care created by the physical therapist. We are proposing to change the language in Subchapter 3 from "under the direction" to "under the supervision of." This change is proposed to ensure consistency of language throughout Chapter 14, and to align with the language in the professional licensure regulations, which I just discussed, for physical therapists and physical therapy assistants. We are also proposing to change the language in Subchapter 5 from "in the presence and under the supervision of" to "under the supervision of a physical therapist." Again, this change will ensure consistency of language throughout our chapter, and provide much-needed clarification to the field. I will pause here before moving on to the other proposed amendments for any questions you might have about this proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So, I do have a question. I'm looking here, and I want to be 100% sure that when we are saying the physical therapist is going to initiate the treatment plan, that they are physically meeting with that student and assessing the student, or is the physical therapy assistant with a telecommunicating, having the student there, physical therapy assistant is making, you know, doing as the therapist is asking, what's the range of motion, things like that? Are they physically seeing or relying on a camera to be looking in and assessing a student? I haven't, I don't have a problem with the therapy assistant really making sure that the program is in place, but I'm looking here for the verbiage that's going to really assure me that that therapist is making the assessment and seeing that child physically, as opposed to, we saw, we had a beautiful video, we weren't able to see. Things go wrong, they're not 100%. I want to make sure that if, in this telecommunication world that we're living in, that that student who needs true good physical therapy services is being seen by that therapist, and then the therapy assistant, who's, I'm sure, very qualified and will do a great job, is executing the plan.
Yes. So, in this section that I just went through, there is no provision for virtual or telecommunication with regard to the physical therapist and the physical therapy assistant. So, I'm not proposing that yet. However, the next section that we are going to talk about, we are proposing to allow virtual related services in limited circumstances. So, that, there could be an opportunity for that in the next set of proposed amendments.
So, do we need to say here, in the chapter, though, that the therapist will assess the student in person? Or is that not necessary?
Well, we don't say that for any of our other assessments. The absence of that language means that it would be provided in person. There's nothing in Chapter 14 that allows for those assessments to be done virtually at this time.
So, that's everyone's understanding that, of course, we would see the child?
Correct. Yes. Correct.
Please continue.
Okay. Thank you. The second change we are proposing, let me get there, would allow for related services to be provided virtually in two limited circumstances. The first circumstance is when a student cannot attend school due to an acute or chronic medical condition. In this scenario, the proposed language mirrors the process currently in existing Chapter 16 for requesting medical home instruction. That process requires the student's parent to submit a written order from the student's physician verifying the need. The school physician then reviews and provides approval. The student's need for the services in progress would be reviewed every 30 school days by the student's IEP team. The second circumstance where related services could be provided virtually is if a school building or district is closed in accordance with New Jersey statute during a declared state of emergency or public health emergency, and the district has implemented its program of virtual instruction for all students. In this scenario, related services would be permitted to be provided virtually as well. The regulations, it's important to note, would permit, not require, related services to be provided virtually. Families and school districts would need to determine if it would be best for the student. The needs of the student come first. Not every student can benefit from virtual instruction, and it is up to families and schools to make that determination. However, it is important to note that the Administrative Code already allows virtual instruction for students with an acute or chronic health condition through Chapter 16. These amendments would permit the provision of related services virtually as well. This flexibility to provide related services virtually when a student is unable to attend school in person due to a temporary or chronic medical condition will ensure continuity of services, prevent regression, and allow the student to make progress toward meeting the goals and objectives in their IEP. A topical briefer issued recently by the United States Department of Education provided research and data to support this proposal, and their research suggests that the provision of related services virtually can be, in some cases, as effective as those delivered in person. Telepractice for the provision of related services to students with disabilities has been in use well before the COVID-related closures in 2019 and 2020. It has been especially useful in providing services to students in rural and isolated areas where providers are scarce. Research demonstrates that the provision of related services such as physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech-language therapy, and counseling can be effective through telemedicine. Some of the research documented benefits include increased collaboration between families and providers, decreased time away from instruction, and an opportunity for students to generalize or use their skills in settings other than a classroom. So, thank you. Those are our proposals, and I'm happy to take any other questions you may have.
All right. I do have another question. Thank you. So, when we're talking about families and LEAs are going to work together, we're in a remote setting, or for whatever circumstance. The LEAs know it's hard to find a speech therapist that's going to get in the car and drive to somebody's house, but the parents desperately want their child to have the socialization or feel like a part of something, and they strongly want them in the home. When we're looking at these new regulations, and it looks like just a little bit of change in words, are we forcing more families to possibly have to go to due process to get those services provided in their home, they have a medically frail or, for whatever reason, a child is home? How are we ensuring that by adopting these new regulations, that we're not making it more difficult for families who want the service they want?
So, we believe that the flexibility will encourage that communication. That, again, we're not requiring this, but what we are seeing in the field and anecdotally is that because there is such a shortage, students aren't receiving any services. And districts are able to, in some cases, find providers who are willing to work at night, even on the weekends, outside of those regular school hours, but we can't allow that now because we don't allow for the virtual instruction. It's not an option at all. So, in a case where a parent feels as though having the provider come to the home in person is best for the child, the process would be as it is now. They talk with the case manager, they talk with the IEP team, they come to what we hope is a mutual agreement on what is best for the student. But as you noted, there are, you know, unfortunately, there are cases where districts and parents do disagree about what is in the best interest of the child, and in those cases, there are dispute resolution options available under the IDEA. We do everything we can in the Office of Special Education to encourage facilitated IEP meetings, to encourage parents to work collaboratively, to encourage districts to work collaboratively with parents, but sometimes it does happen that there are disagreements that, you know, result in a mediation or a due process.
And you keep records on that as we're moving forward. You'll keep that data so we can look at it?
Yes.
Will the data indicate if a district does not have personnel to actually meet with students?
So, we do collect information on certified staff. We also collect information through our complaint process and mediation due process on when parents are filing complaints with us because they're not receiving services. So, we do have that information already. And sometimes districts, in their response to those complaints, will say, "We acknowledge this. This is very upsetting for us as well. We're unable to provide the services because we don't have the staff." And then we work with the district to make sure that those services are made up for the students, that they're doing everything that they can to locate staff. But we do believe that this flexibility will help to address that. We have heard that from districts.
So, all those IEPs that were noncompliant because kids weren't getting the speech services, this should certainly help the compliance piece. And who is supervising to make sure, so speech is going on maybe weekends and evenings, and who's supervising all that? That's the individual child study teams that's monitoring that?
Yes. And one of the things that we have found is that parents are actually able to be more engaged in this process. So, that is something positive that we've heard from our advocates, is that parents are able to listen and see, well, what does that speech lesson actually look like? What is happening, you know, in physical therapy? Because they were able to be in the home, you know, if it's happening in the evening sometimes, and be a part of that, you know, part of that process. So, it actually did result, in some cases, in that increased collaboration between the parent and the provider.
Could an unintended consequence from this change from allowing for virtual instruction where a child would benefit to allowing for more flexibility to the point that a district could save money and not provide what is in the student's best interest?
Well, that is why we're making sure these are very limited circumstances. So, there's only two circumstances where we are proposing that we allow this flexibility. We're not proposing that every service be allowed to be provided virtually. We're saying that when the student has an acute medical condition, so those are kids that already aren't in school, and the code already allows for them to receive their instruction virtually, but it never allowed for them to receive the related services virtually. So, we want to close that gap, and we want to make sure that for those students who are unable to attend school, that they have that flexibility, if it's appropriate for them, to receive their related services and their instruction virtually. And then the other circumstance is when the school is closed, if a school may close again, if there's another pandemic or another, you know, circumstance. So, all of those students are virtual in that case.
Thank you. That makes me feel better. Thank you.
Just one final question. Feedback from the field. Have you gotten, spoken with SPAN or, you know, any of these parent advocacy groups? What's their thought on this? Are they wholeheartedly accepting it?
So, we have discussed this through what's called our statewide, our SEAC, our Statewide Special Education Advisory Council, and we have gotten feedback there that has been positive in terms of allowing this flexibility for districts. We will have a comment-response period as part of this rulemaking, so I do look forward to hearing from other stakeholders aside from our SEAC, from our districts, and from other parents to see if there are other concerns that we can address through this rulemaking.
Has this gone through the SSEAC yet?
Yes.
It has?
Yes.
Any other questions from our board members? Any other questions from our remote hybrid board members? All right. So, the next stage is, if you'll complete the sentence.
The next stage would be to come back next month for second discussion.
And we will be accepting public testimony next month about this as well for the public?
Excellent.
So, I can remind everyone?
We look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see where we are in the agenda. I believe that we do have public testimony at 2:00 beginning. Is there anything else, new business-wise, that someone wants to mention or work session-wise? Thank you very-
That I request some information, I guess, in the February meeting regarding Gifted and Talented. Do you know when I will be receiving that information?
Could you specify for the public what your question is, sir?
My question is, I wanted to know, based on the resolution that we passed in support of Gifted and Talented programming, the percentage of Black and Hispanic or Latino students that have been accepted into those types of programs across the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Goldenberg? I am. I also had one question, and I probably, when the commissioner was speaking, should have asked. Student recognition ceremony at Burlington County Institute on May 17th, I have written down, is honoring students, and I always want to honor our students. I think that's a great thing. 11 out of 21 counties are participating. Is there a reason why all the counties aren't participating in that?
I don't know. Commissioner, that's for you.
Thank you, President Goldenberg. Yes. So, historically, due to the number of counties with 21 and the large size of the group, when you can nominate an individual or a group, it was decided years past that we would divide the counties as evenly as possible, having 10 counties represented one year and 11 the following year. This allows students to return to school and doesn't extend the event beyond their typical school day.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
My pleasure.
Or anything before we adjourn? Any new business? Hearing none. May I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you. Pastor President Oponte, may I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary Beth Berry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you. If you could all turn off your microphones.